Good evening, everybody.
Okay.
Before we get started, I'd like to ask Sarah LaDart to lead us in our opening prayer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you'll pray with me, please. Dear Lord, as we enter this place, we bring your presence with us. We bring your peace, your grace, your mercy, and your order. We thank you for the opportunity that this upcoming election puts before us and for the privilege to exercise our solemn duty to vote. We thank you for your law, which our founding fathers acknowledged and recognized as higher than human law. We pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. Grant them the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. We pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who choose to make Milton their home. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, November 5th, 2018 to order. Sudi, if you'll please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 5th, 2018 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance, please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, you must provide an affidavit stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. And I'll call, have our city clerk call our first item, which is approval of the agenda. A couple things. I think we need to add an emergency item that Stacy's brought to my attention under new business, which would be consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton authorizing change order number one to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Interdev LLC for the purchase of hardware. And also, I think Carter had asked to remove consent agenda item number four.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thank you.
And we're just going to remove that.
Yes, sir. We'll bring that forward at a future meeting.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the agenda as prepared by staff with amendments.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Ward, second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, next item is public comment, or general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. So when your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any general public comment?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Tim Becker.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Several months ago, I vowed to disengage from city government. I felt that the city was moving backward, and the investment that I had made in this city, which was considerable, was wasted. However, this week's packet prompted me to attend tonight. There was a major change buried in our packet in terms of how we grant variances. And it got me thinking about power in government. Power is finite, and shifts in power are mostly a zero-sum game. Power can reside with council, it can reside with staff, or it can reside with citizens. I think it's best if we concentrate power on citizens. And there was an election just a year ago where the major theme was shifting power back to citizens. What does that mean? It does not mean retaining power and using it for citizens. It means actually giving them power. How do you do that? You do that through good governance, things like transparency, because information is power. You do it through the rule of law. Our variance law is a great example. There's very little wiggle room in it, and I like that. And that's intentional. It's to protect citizens from arbitrary decisions. The only way to truly shift power to citizens is to change our institutions of government so power truly invests in citizens. It means that you have to give up power, you. And I know that's difficult to do. Let's use development as an example. This is the most important issue in our city, and we all know this. It's where you spend the majority of your time. And I've sat out there, and you know this, dozens of times I've been in that audience. And I can tell you that on a regular basis, citizens leave here unhappy. They leave here dispirited, and not because they didn't get the outcome they wanted, but because they don't feel like they are treated fairly. The process is tilted towards developers. And what have we done in the last year to change that? Nothing. I'll give you a few examples. Developers that come into this room, and I hope we don't see this tonight, they have free rein. They can come up to this microphone at any point. I can't do that as a citizen. We saw this in the Matildas hearing. There was a motion on the table, and the developer literally got up, objected to that motion, the motion got changed, and a condition got removed that benefited that developer. Citizens need a second opportunity to speak. In a lot of zoning hearings, it's the developer and citizens, and then it's all the developer after that. We need to give citizens a second opportunity to speak because there's a lot of things that get said, and they're unchallenged. The $250 campaign contribution rule. Jan Jones is our representative. Who's talking to her and saying, "Let's change this law"? Who's doing that? We need to improve the CZIMs. We need to improve our notification requirements. We need to get packets out sooner to citizens. Four days is too little time. We need to run our committees better. We've seen cronyism in our committees, point blank. I know that you want to have good outcomes for the city. Everybody wants good outcomes for the cities. But I've heard the longest-standing council members say, "Citizens don't care about process. They only care about outcomes." I reject this. It's wrong, and it's dangerous, and it's an insult to citizens, and it shows how disconnected and cynical certain politicians have become. So right now, shifting power to citizens is just an empty campaign promise. Let's start delivering on that promise. I believe what makes Milton a great city is its people. And we need to honor those people with the best government we can give them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have any more public comments, Sudi?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. If you'll please read those items.
Our first item this evening is approval of the October 22nd, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Agenda item number 18300, Approval of a Contract with EPR Systems USA, Inc., for the Provision of a Records Management System for Milton Fire Rescue. Agenda item number 18301. Next is approval of a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Sponsored by FEMA. Agenda item number 18302. Our next item was removed under approval of the agenda. So our fourth item and final consent agenda item is approval of the following subdivision plat: Opel Alice Waldrup Land Lot 1143, 525 Cox Road Minor Plat, two lots, 2.72 total acres, .74 lots per acre. And this is agenda item number 18304.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second, from Councilmember Kuntz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. All right, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you will, please call the first presentation.
My first item under presentations is a proclamation recognizing Prematurity Awareness Day, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Have proclamation here recognizing prematurity awareness day. Whereas the March of Dimes Foundation is a pioneer in improving the health of infants and women of childbearing age by preventing birth defects, premature birth and infant mortality. Whereas the March of Dimes in 2003 launched the premature charity campaign to address the crisis of premature birth and help families have full-term healthy babies. And whereas, the March of Dimes has set a national goal of reducing preterm birth to 5.5% in every state by 2030, which will result in a healthier start in life for teens and thousands of infants. And whereas, in 2017, 14,700 babies were born prematurely in the state of Georgia, representing 11.2% of state births. And whereas, Georgia receives a grade of D and a disparity index rating of 1.32 on the March of Dimes 2017 Premature Birth Report Card. And whereas, March of Dimes in Georgia has worked extensively to promote maternal mortality prevention policies that help to reduce premature birth and promote health equity. And whereas, the March of Dimes in Georgia looks forward to partnering with the mayor and the city of Milton in response to the continued crisis of premature birth. And whereas, the month of November is recognized as World Prematurity Awareness Month to bring about recognition of this global health crisis. And November 17th is recognized as Prematurity Awareness Day across the United States. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the city of Milton, do hereby extend special recognition to the March of Dimes in Georgia and declare November 17th, 2018 as Prematurity Awareness Day. And that's given under our hand and seal the city of Milton, Georgia on the fifth day of November 2018. And we have somebody here to represent it. Okay. And I'd like to ask the council to come down with me. And it's also interesting, my birthday's actually here in November, and I was three pounds and was born at seven months, so I was a preemie.
That was.
Yep.
Mom's early.
My son was really quiet.
Yeah.
From one, two, three. Let's do it again. One, two, three, smile.
Super thank you.
All right, Sudi, if you'll please call our next item. I'm going to report some presentation.
Our next item this evening is proclamation recognizing Veterans Day. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
All right, next I have a proclamation for Veterans Day 2018. Whereas it has been a lo, has long been our custom to commemorate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War II, or World War I, I'm sorry, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by redict, redictating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in several other great military conflicts, which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas, Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June 4th, 1926, calling for the observance of November 11th with the appropriate ceremonies, and later provided in an act approved May 13th, 1938, that the 11th of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order to expand the significance of that commemoration, commemoration, and in order that a grateful nation might pay appropriate homage, homage to the veterans of all of its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved on June 1st, 1954, changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the city of Milton, hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe November 11th, 2018 as Veterans Day. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of those, all of those who fought so valiantly on, on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage and freedom. And let us all consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. This is given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the fifth day of November 2018. And if council would, would join me down to present this, and any veterans, please come forward.
me in, and then tighten up just a little bit. Perfect. Maybe if you'll turn your proclamation around. There you go. Perfect, perfect. That's perfect. Thank you. That's, okay. We're all looking right here. All of us. All right, we're going one, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Stay right where you are. One, two, three, smile. Here we go.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to not only the veterans that are here with us tonight, but all of them. Just a huge thank you from, from deep from our heart. And as Roderick Wallace always says, freedom is not free. So I really thank you guys. Appreciate you.
Next item is a proclamation recognizing Native American History Month, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. I'm honored, again, for one more proclamation, and this is Native American History Month. Whereas, the Americans we know as American Indians and Native Americans were the first explorers and settlers of the areas that now make up the United States. And whereas, mountains and rivers and lakes and valleys, states and counties, trails and towns across this land have Indian names. They're lasting reminders of the presence and the significance of American Indians, not just in our geography, but throughout the whole, the whole of American history. And whereas, many of the foods we eat and the medicines and remedies we use were introduced by Indians. And more than one highway follows an Indian trail. And whereas, Indians make contributions in every area of endeavor in American life, and our literature and all our arts draw upon Indian themes and wisdom. And whereas, countless American Indians have served in our armed forces and have fought valiantly for our country. And whereas, during the Thanksgiving season, generations of Americans are reminded of the early friendship of the pilgrims and the American Indians. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, hereby dictate and proclaim November as Native American History Month in the city of Milton, Georgia. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the fifth day of November 2018. And if council will please join me to present this.
Yay. All right. Here. One, two, three, smile. Let's do one more. One, two, three, smile. Okay. Right, thank you.
Right, thank you. Oh, one more. I forgot, same place. One more, one more, sorry. You're welcome. One, two, three. Let's do it again, one, two, three. Great. Thank you. You're so welcome.
All right, Sudi, if you'll please send our final item under Reports and Presentations.
Our final item this evening is a report on the public involvement process for the former Milton Country Club, Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn this over real quick to Mr. Will Herbig, who's here from Kimley Horn, to give us an update on the progress they've made with the planning for the former Milton Country Club. We've just finished a pretty intensive couple of weeks of public input, and we wanted to come and touch base with you to show you what we've done and what we've heard so far from the committees and the citizens that we've had participate in this process so far, and to give you an opportunity to provide any guidance or input, feedback that you might have on where we are at this particular point in the process. So with that, I will turn it over to Will.
Thank you so much. And I will toggle over to the presentation here. Make sure that that is showing. Let me know when we're ready to go.
Terrific.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm delighted to be with you and to have the opportunity to share with you the results of our Phase 1 public engagement for the park at the former Milton Country Club. I come hot off the presses from our open house, which was a conclusion of Phase 1 engagement, which we just held over here at Community Place. So we just got some late-breaking input and reactions to some of our draft policies and design guidance that we'll be giving the design team going forward. I wanted to hit four goals with my time with you today, give you a little bit of background, recap where we are on the project and the project overall scope, talk about the engagement process, what we heard through that process, and then how that resulted in some draft policies that will guide the design team going forward. So as a reminder, we have a two-phase project that scoped, beginning one that we're in right now is focused on the former country club itself, the former golf course. And that is Phase 1, the park. And we've looked at the site in two pieces. That is the passive preserve, that's the fairways, the active golf course. And then companion to that is the active acres, that's the former club facilities, the clubhouse, the pool, the tennis courts. The second phase of the project is focused on trail connections to the Central Milton Trail and a focus on trails within the Fulton County school site off Freemenville Road. We will be looking at that going forward at the conclusion of Phase 1, which is actually now. The project team, in addition to myself at Kimley Horn, we have three sub consultants. Clark Patterson Lee is leading our concept design, the, the concept for the park itself. Jan Hancock with Hancock Resources is our equestrian expert, who was with us through the Phase 1 public engagement. And then we have McFarland Iron Associates doing topographic survey work for the trails along the Central Milton Trail. So that's Wood Road, Summit Road, and other, mostly made up and composed of, the gravel road system between Birmingham Falls down to Providence Park. We'll look at that on a map. So Phase 1, our goal is to identify a vision for the park, that's the 140 acres approximately of the former club. And then Phase 2 is focused on the trails, that is a vision for the trails, both on the Fulton County school site and the Central Milton Trail. So the goal here is Fulton County owns that property there on Freemenville, and is there an opportunity to create some type of trail connection along the perimeter of the site that could be preserved at such time that the school ever decides, school board decides to develop? That would get us a trail connection over to Wood Road, which was identified last year as one of the gold, three golden opportunities in the Milton Trail blueprint, which would connect between Birmingham Falls, Summit Elementary, and Providence Park. There's several tasks associated with each one of the phases. We have completed most of the Phase 1 activities or tasks, which was an environmental screening of the golf course itself. We identified no environmental factors on the site, except for the possibility of an endangered fish, possibly in Chicken Creek, which no one has seen in quite some time, but it is on the radar. And as we get into, we've done, let me back up, we've, we're underway with an assessment of the existing facilities at the club, the clubhouse, the pool, and the tennis courts. We're continuing to look at that and the feasibility of long-term operation of those facilities, whether it's by a third-party operator or a lot of the other options, by looking at case studies around the country. And as I mentioned, we finished public engagement. Phase 2 is focused on the trails, and we're getting ready to do, the first part of that is topographic survey work along the right-of-ways along the Central Milton Trail. All of that will come together to develop a concept, concept plan that will identify long and short-term strategies for the park itself, along with typical cross-sections and conditions along the trails. As we begin to look at the park itself, to look at this map, you kind of have to turn your head on the side because north is going towards the right side of your screen, that's Dinsmore along the far right-hand side of your screen, under the word Active Acres. We've identified two primary areas of the site, and that is the passive preserve, which is everything in green, that was purchased with Green Space Bond Funds and is obligated to remain passive in its use. The other piece is the active acres, that is the existing club facilities or former club facilities, about seven acres, which was purchased with other funds and provides much more flexibility in the long-term programming of that space. Within the passive preserve itself, there's two different character zones, and that's why you see two different colors of green. The North Woods is the lighter green, it has more open vistas, and has more proximity to the North, the Wood Valley neighborhood, High Grove Road, and High Grove Club Drive. And then the South Woods, shown in the darker forest green to the south, less impacts on residential, much more steep slope, and much more wooded conditions. So the opportunities for different user experiences and impacts are very different, so we're considering those differently. As a project team, we established four project ground rules to guide our work and guide our Phase 1 public engagement. Number one, we want at all times to honor Milton's rural character. We're obligated to do so with the purchase of the site being with the Green Space Bond Funds, and that the site will remain passive, with the exception of the active acres. Ground rule number two is to build from existing plans and studies related to parks and recreation throughout the city. We're building from, directly from the Milton Trails blueprint last year. We're also looking at some of the recommendations that are coming from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is in draft form, and some of the community assessments that were put out and compiled as part of that. It informed a lot of the questions that we asked through our public outreach. We want to design safe and attractive spaces for all at the end of this process, and of course, we want to value the voices of all citizens, and, and really have tried to stay true to that throughout the last month with our robust engagement. So as we began to look at the site as a project team, we went out and looked at the conditions. I mentioned that we have two different zones in the passive preserve, the North Woods here, you see with its open vistas. The city is actually maintaining this right now with intermittent mowing. And then as we move to the South Woods on the southern end, a much more, you can begin to see that steep slope I mentioned, and you can also see the city is experimenting with what happens to a golf course when you let it go back to nature? How does nature begin to restore itself? And it is actually a rapid process, and so that is just a few months of growth from one season that you begin to see on the former fairways. At the active acres, the seven acres where the former club facilities are, we have the clubhouse, the pool, the cart barn, and the surface parking lot. The initial assessments coming back from that, you know, the pool is in good shape with some of the improvements that were made last year. The tennis courts are up and running and are beloved by the community. And looking at the initial assessments of the clubhouse itself, it's structurally sound. There are some issues with the roof, and what we found is the structure of the building is such that all of the interior walls are not structural. So there's infinite flexibility on what may be possible in reconfiguring that building if it makes sense at the end of this process to repurpose that building. We don't know that quite yet. In looking at the site, we had some initial observation as a team. There continues to be questions related to, and the process to conclude, the transfer of easements related to the golf course and the cart paths, and those vary throughout the site. There is a variety of deferred maintenance on the cart paths. And what we've seen in case studies of golf course-to-park conversions in a lot of communities is they can simply convert those cart paths into trails. We are not as lucky here in Milton to simply do that. Out of 25,000 linear feet of trail path, about 15,000 linear feet are in ill-repair. And so we kind of have to start from scratch in looking at developing a plan and even the interim plan for, for trails. There's a variety of deferred maintenance on drainage. You can begin to see here where this structured drainage is beginning to collapse, and even opportunities to try to shore that up are failing. Another, here's where drainage and cart path maintenance combine to create a public safety issue. This bridge, if you look at it, its structural pier is exposed and falling apart, not, not a bridge I'd recommend you, you go out and cross. So this is why it's important that the public not have access to the park at this time until some of these conditions are improved. So to summarize our public engagement, we, for the last 30, 35 days, we focused on reaching the public, both where they are and coming to us. We started by launching an online public input portal, we were at Crab Apple Fest, four public sessions, meeting with the equestrian committee and the open house. So with the online public input portal, we launched that October 1st, we had over 1,100 participants, and that is all Milton residents. So that was not folks coming from outside, we were able to, to query and sort, so we had 1,100 Milton residents that participated. Just to put that into perspective, for the Fulton County Conference of Transportation Plan, there's about 1,800 survey participants for that, for the entire county. Dunwoody recently did a survey for the Dunwoody Village, imagining that, they had about 1,500 participants. So I think this is a really robust engagement here with this 140 acres. At the Crab Apple Fest, we talked to about 500 participants, we got them to engage in questions that were both in alignment with that in the online survey and what we asked at the online, not the online, but the in-person sessions. So we're able to quantify and compare input from all of these different mechanisms. We had four targeted public meetings, the public was welcome to attend all of them, but we did have different stakeholder focus groups. So we targeted, number one, the adjacent residents and neighbors, number two, members of city committees, number three was, number three is escaping me, we can go straight back, and I don't want to get it wrong, it was, number two was active groups, those are members of the swim and tennis club, they are at the former, the former club facilities. Then we had members of the city committees, that's equestrian, open space, disability, and better together. And then we had a catch-all on October 18th for all city committees. Let me advance here. At those meetings, we provided an overview of the scope, we shared information on case studies of similar sites and, and park conversions, and then we had, the second half of the meetings were focused on public conversation. We were in small groups of tables, and we had iterative rounds of conversation, we called this World Cafe, and through these very simple questions, we were quickly able to get at the heart of, of discovery of issues that were important to these very stakeholder groups. And then at the end of that, we took that input, broke it down into the top four or five issues from those target groups, and then we asked for participants then to vote on both long-term and short-term strategies that they wanted to advance. We also, as a consultant team and staff, went out and visited the site very quickly one morning, went out there, we looked at the site so that we could bring everything that we were hearing from the public, we could put it together with the site. We, while we were out there, we met with one of the critical key stakeholders, Hunt Tosh, he's there with our equestrian expert, Jan Hancock, and we also went to the Fulton County school site, so we could understand that connection. So what did we hear? We took all this input, we kind of put it in a bag, shook it up, and what came out the other side? Well, we actually, here's some of the results that came out with the, this is information both in line, online and in person. So we see far and above, walkers and hikers are the number one interest group that participated through the engagement process, followed by cyclists, runners, some of the members of those active clubs, swim and tennis, then some other user groups. Equestrian's, not surprisingly, a little lower, but it is a niche group within the community, and so their numbers are a little bit lower. In terms of, we asked within the active acres, what are the preferred programs and amenities? Swimming pool comes out highest, along with picnic areas, possibly a playground, the tennis courts, so a lot of some of the existing facilities. And then again, equestrian coming down relatively low, but not surprising. Passive preserve, that's the, the former fairways of the site. Number one thing folks wanted was wetland boardwalks, which is a great opportunity because much of the south property is wetland. Grasslands and wildflower meadows, I think people could envision those fairways being converted into open areas. The irrigation ponds maybe becoming fishing ponds, catch and release, and then restored woodlands. And then in terms of preferred trail types, hiking, walking, biking trails, very, very high, equestrian again, a little lower, but not a surprise. And then in trail surfaces, soft-surface trails and boardwalk, far and above the preferred trail types. The, the more urbanized conditions of asphalt or concrete showing up much lower. And given existing conditions and without build-out of the trail blueprint, access by car and vehicle was by and far how folks envisioned accessing the park. At these public meetings, we also asked for participants to identify site features and conditions, so we began to identify those in addition to what we identified as staff. We shared this at the open house a few minutes ago. So we took all that, we put that in the bag, and here is where all of this input comes down to some, seven guiding principles, supported by 25 design policies. So number one, and Sudi, I believe we have copies of this for you, of these guiding principles. Number A, and these are ranked in what we heard from the public. So number one, promote the safety and mitigate impacts of adjacent neighbors. And so the question for us as a design team is, how do we define, screen, and protect public and private spaces? And so we have a variety of strategies, and I don't want to go through every one, but it is a combination of physical and landscape solutions to screen between public property and the backyards of homes and the park. It's moving trails as far away from residential properties to the extent possible and practical. It's limiting access from public roads that are primarily residential, such as High Grove Road and High Grove Club Drive. And it is considering operation of the passive preserve as a dusk, a dawn-to-dusk facility. Number two, celebrate and restore nature throughout the passive preserve, we're obligated to do this through the, the, the legal requirements of the Green Space Bond acquisition. So how can plans build upon Milton's character while preserving both the natural features, but also the design landscape? Because the golf course itself is a design landscape, the hills and other things have been created, they are not all nature, natural, and there may be features that want to be preserved. And so there's also supporting policies here, I won't hit them all, but some of it focuses on stormwater, naturalized drainage, some of it is restoring Chicken Creek and its stream banks, and another very important one, B6, and we heard this from the public, is limiting lighting, sound, and additional structures within the site. Keeping it natural, keeping it rural. C, retain existing programs within the active acres, the swim and tennis programs are beloved, the clubhouse maybe not so much. So how can ongoing planning support possibly, you know, not only the existing programs, but possibly suitable growth in that location of those programs? Four, or D, is balance multiple uses within the park, and this is complicated, because we have a variety of interest groups. We have walkers, hikers, runners, bikers, and equestrians, and they're all competing And they're all competing for space out there, and they all have different needs. And so our challenge as designers is how do we meet the design requirements for each one of those groups to access this park safely? And so we have some policies supporting that as well. And one of the key ideas that came out is a variety of trails of various widths and distances, so possibly a series of loop trails throughout the site. E is support safe connections to existing and future parks. This is already within the scope of the projects connecting to the Central Milton Trail, but we also heard through the process that we needed to explore opportunities to connect northward to Birmingham Park. Also, safety of road crossings is important and critical, and so prioritizing, avoiding at-grade crossings of roads wherever possible, and we evaluated that. And so one of those, we know that the Central Milton Trail, shown in yellow, is within the scope and obviously connecting, as I mentioned, through Fulton County School, but this northern connection to Birmingham, possibly using Nick's Road, was determined through discovery through the public process. Creating some type of pedestrian connection or greenway on Dinsmore between the club and what used to be Fairway One. And then how do we get below Freemanville at Chicken Creek? There's an existing bridge there. We've done some preliminary analysis, and it looks like from a clearance point of view, we could make that work. It would require easements through property owners, strategic property owners in that location to make that happen. F is distribute access points and parking off-site. This is important because the park only accesses public property in four locations, and they're all challenged. So we want to make sure that each of those access points is evaluated for public safety, habitat preservation, and impacts on adjacent neighbors. And so, you know, we look at, if you look at the right, we have the existing 126 parking spaces at the club, but that can't accommodate everything. Access, vehicular access on down at what used to be Fairway One, not good sightlines and clearance there, and all of these others get challenges. Our most, the connection that we want to explore the most is at the southern end and getting through Chicken Creek under Freemanville and over to the school property. And so finally, to do all this is going to require partnerships and coordination with adjacent landowners and organizations. These are strategic partners that could advance both planning, connections, and implementation. And I'll just talk about a couple opportunities here. There we go. And this is going back and pivoting to the southern end of the property, and that is along that property, and the property owner is critical along Chicken Creek at the far south or left-hand side of the screen. There also may be, the shortest distance to connect is actually that yellow arrow to the right of that, which would require an at-grade crossing across the street. We don't know what the solutions are, but those are two concepts or ideas that we are exploring and will require continued conversations with strategic partners. So what are next steps? We're going to continue to develop out this concept plan. That is going to be both made up of short-term strategies. What is the minimum that needs to be done to provide relatively immediate and safe access to the park space? And then what is that long-term vision and build-out of the park? And maybe that's a 25-year vision. That will all go into a physical concept plan. That's not a design that can go out and get built, but it is a vision to go out and talk with strategic partners and funding partners to advance the project going forward. We'll also continue evaluation of the trails that I mentioned, the survey work, individual conversations with property owners along the Central Milton Trail and including the Fulton County School, staff and board. And then we'll develop typical cross-sections because Wood Road, Summit Road, Red Road, they all vary in their widths and conditions. So we'll develop cross-sections in various places. All of that will come together with a concept plan that will also have costing and implementation and phasing recommendations. So at that, that is a very quick update on several months of work and engagement, and I'm happy to take your questions.
I'd just like to have the presentation that you had. Maybe we can post it for the community. We can study it more.
And I would just say that, you know, it would be very important to me to make sure public had access to it and lots of feedback from public and those that are affected.
All of the draft policies that were shared tonight, we handed out those policies. We're asking for folks to take that, read it. We know there's 25 supporting design policies, and we're asking the community to go and wordsmith that, make sure we got it right, because we had a short amount of time. It's our first stab, and so it will only get stronger with community input going forward.
Is that available on, would that be available online on the city website? Can we?
Sure, we'll make sure that all the information is available. At this stage, we're at a very conceptual, high level, so there are some details associated with this plan that we just haven't gotten to yet, but everything that we've done up till now.
And maybe just a statement of that, too. That way, people know that it's just high level, it's nothing planned in stone, no pun intended, but also open for input.
We can do that. And if you have any questions or comments as we move forward, please feel free to reach out to us, and we'll include all of that in the concept report.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Sudi, if you'd please present the next, sound the next first presentation.
All right. This is our first presentation items. Number one is RZ 1813 VC 1807 13090 Hopewell Road by Kai Shang Sioux Dynasty to rezon from AG1 agricultural to R3A single-family to develop 73 single-family lots on 47.1145 acres at a density of 1.55 units per acre and a two-part concurrent variance. Two, reduce the rural trail from 10 feet to 5.2 feet, Section 486741. And number two, to reduce the stream setback from 25 feet to 0 feet, Section 204262. And to consider and take action on any necessary amendment to the city's sewer boundary. Agenda item number 18305. Next is ZM 1803 Park at Bethany, northeast corner of Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road, containing 9.09 acres in the second district, second section, Land Lot 832 by Stanley Martin Homes to request a zoning modification for the following. Request to modify conditions 3G and 3H of RZ 1316 to reduce the following setbacks. One, a reduction of the side setback adjacent to the street on lots 15 and 23 from 10 feet to 8 feet, condition 3G. And two, a reduction of the side setbacks on front entries 15 through 26 from 7 feet to 6 feet, condition 3H. And this is agenda item number 18306.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the first presentation?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the first presentation as read.
Second. Okay, a motion from Councilmember Jameson with a second from Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. All right, next we'll move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please sound the first item.
This item is consideration of occupational tax restructure. Ms. Sarah Ladart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Were there any public comments, Sudi?
There are none.
Okay. So this public hearing is the first step of our outreach plan to get input from Milton, from the Milton community at large regarding occupational tax restructure. We will be moving forward with targeted stakeholder groups in the coming weeks, and after that input is received, we will come back to council at a work session for further input. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no public hearing, I'll close the hearing, but is there any questions or comments for Sarah on that?
No.
All right, thanks.
All right, Sudi, if you'll please sound the next public hearing item.
My next item is an alcohol beverage license application. Consideration of issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Cindy Rodeo Collection doing business as Crab Apple Cottage, 765 Mid Broadwell Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004. This is agenda item number 18307, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This alcohol beverage license is for Crab Apple Cottage. It's for an incidental license. If you recall, that's a license for an establishment that does not sell food. They cannot charge for the alcohol. They can only offer wine and beer, and they can offer no more than 16 ounces of wine or 24 ounces of beer in one day to any patron, and their expenses shall not exceed 2% of gross receipts. The applicant has complied with all of our requirements, and we recommend approval.
Okay, any questions? No, I'll open for motion. I'm sorry, is there any public comments, Sudi?
There is not, sir.
All right, I'll close the hearing, and I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 18-307.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Okay, we can move on to our zoning agenda. Sudi, if you'll please read the zoning rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, Mayor and Council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances. In addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments, I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for the zoning items. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the City Clerk Department prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or association, an affidavit might accompany your public comment card. Before beginning your comment at the podium, please identify yourself by name and address. We have one zoning item this evening, and this is consideration of ZM 1802 VC 1808, located at the southeast quadrant of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road by OHC Birmingham LLC. 22.12 acres in the second district, second section, land lots 379, 380, 413, and 414. One, request to modify ZM 1406, condition 2A, to the revised site plan received on September 18th, 2018. Two, request to modify ZM 1403 to delete condition 6C, the reference of the village green. And three, a concurrent variance to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the south property line of the mixed zoning district adjacent to AG1, Section 64-1142A3B. This is agenda item number 18293. First presentation was at the October 22nd, 2018 council meeting. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we're looking at a zoning modification for the piece of property located on the southeast corner of Birmingham Crossroads. This is a piece of property that's zoned MIX on a portion of it, as well as AG1 on the southern portion of the property. And I'll just go back and give you a brief history of the project so that we all are on the same page with where we stand today as we move forward with this consideration. But the site plan was originally adopted, zoning was originally adopted by Fulton County as M1 and from, rezoned from C1 and M1 to mix. That was done in 2004 by Fulton County. And then another modification was done by the city in 2014 in June and July of that So when we look at the site plan that was originally done by Fulton County, it was very similar to what you'll see today. You had MIX zoning, which included townhomes, retail, office space, daycare facility, village green, as well as single-family AG1 lots, 11 lots on the southern portion of the property. In June and July of 2014, when we did our zoning modifications here in the city, that site plan was modified. I won't go through all of the conditions, but I did want to give you some highlights of what the site plans represented with each of these zonings. But that site plan represented nine single-family homes on that southern side of the property, the AG1 part of the property. 29 townhomes in the MIX section. It had 22,250 square feet of office and retail space. That particular rezoning modification eliminated the need for the daycare. So the original 10,000-square-foot daycare that was shown on the Fulton County site plan was eliminated. And it had 6.75 acres of open space, which consisted predominantly of a community wastewater system that was identified on this site. That zoning eliminated that particular condition because the sewer is being provided by the septic or the package plant over at the Publix. So that was no longer necessary on the southern piece. And so the site plan associated with zoning modifications was what you see here on the screen. So you have the townhomes, mix and distribution of retail and office space across the northern portion of the site, and the single-family residential lots with the large open space in this southern portion of the property. So back in April, a request came forward to provide a site modification and concurrent variance request to eliminate the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback that exists as part of the code between single-family residential properties and non-residential and commercial properties, so potential uses within that MIX zone. At that time, there were 10 single-family lots, 24 single-family home lots on MIX, 20,200 square feet of office and retail. We have the 13,000-square-foot green, and then 2.1 acres of other identified open space throughout the property. Ultimately, that request that came before you in April 23 of 2018 was denied. And so the code allows for a six-month waiting period before that comes back before you. And so the request was resubmitted and is back before you after that six-month waiting period. This is the site plan that was submitted back in March, represents the same thing that we've seen in the other site plans. As with all of the site plans that had been approved to date, there was never a 75-foot buffer shown. And so as we moved through this process, even the Fulton County zoning never showed the 75-foot improvement setback. But as we moved through this process and got to the land disturbance permitting stage for some of this, the need for that was identified, and that's one of the reasons it came back before you in that March timeframe to try and eliminate that buffer, which had never been shown before. So once that zoning plan, zoning modification was denied, the applicant moved forward with the zoning plan and preliminary plat for allowable uses under the conditions of zoning in the 2014 modification. That preliminary plat indicated not only the townhomes that were permitted and the single-family home on the AG1 site, but this shows you the 75-foot buffer on the MIX zone site right here. And so when you look at what was potentially available under the existing zoning conditions, they had 11 single-family lots in the AG1 portion, 30 townhome lots in the MIX. I believe the zoning conditions actually allowed for more townhome lots than that, but it was limited by the sewer that's available on the public site. 10,000 square foot of office space, the required 2.21 acres of open space, and the 13,000 square foot village green. And as I mentioned, 75-foot buffer and 10-foot previous setback were shown on the approved preliminary plat that was reviewed by the planning commission and approved by Community Development back in July. So after all of that, and after the six-month timeframe had expired, the applicant had a desire to go back to the single-family lots rather than the townhome lots in the MIX portion of the property. We believe that would be more consistent with the intent and the potential planning of the Birmingham Crossroads area. And so he submitted the plan, which in this case includes the 10 single-family lots on the AG1 property, which is the southern piece of the property, 25 single-family homes within the MIX. within the MIX portion, 17,000 square feet on the retail that's on Birmingham Highway, a little bit more open space, the 2.3 acres of open space, and the required 13,000-square-foot village green. In addition to that, he's asked for two conditions, well, one condition to be modified and then the concurrent variance. So one condition to be modified would be Condition 6C, which in this case, and we'll get to in just a second, is already required by code, so not necessarily required as a condition of zoning. And then the concurrent variance to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback. And so you'll see here, here's the site plan that was submitted with that. In this particular site plan, those gray areas represent the open space associated with the plan. The stormwater facility on the southwest corner on the AG1 piece is an amenity to the site. It's an upgrade from what would be required under the standard code. It allows for a public park, and the conditions of zoning that are recommended with this provide some design guidance associated with the development of that to make sure that it is an amenity, as well as some trails around the property that would be open to the public. So the project did go to a CZIM meeting in October of this year. The main comments here, that the requested concurrent variance, so that's the deletion of the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, does not meet the development standards. They asked that the AG1 portion of the property be developed with rural development standards. In other words, we encourage the use of no curb and gutter, swales, things that are permitted under the code and would be available to the applicant if they so choose to use those standards to develop that southern piece. And then the comments regarding density and non-residential uses of the sites, and some comments regarding the traffic on Birmingham Road. And as we know, in the past, GDOT is looking at a project at Birmingham, and Birmingham current concept design for that is a roundabout to try and alleviate some of the issues that we have with that particular area. And so when we look at the request for this, so the first request is basically the site plan modification. So this would delete original Condition 2A, replace it with our current conditions for 2A, our current language with that, and the current site plan that was submitted in October of this year. That represents the current site plan. To modify and delete the Condition 6C, and so this condition, as it was written, allowed the village green to be split, 11,500 square feet adjacent to Birmingham Road, and then 1,500 square feet to be used internal to the site. We're recommending deletion of this particular condition to preserve the entire 13,000-square-foot village green, which would be required under the code, and it is as shown on the site plan that was submitted there. And then finally, the concurrent variance regarding the 75-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the MIX and AG1 site plan. This variance, while we considered before, we wanted to bring forth some additional information regarding this variance, and in particular, the requirements of 64-1142. And so some of the things that we would see as being unusual or extraordinary in this case that we wouldn't normally see associated with this request are, one, that this particular piece of property is being developed under one plan of development. So, and typically where you see these buffers, you're going to see these buffers associated with a non-commercial or non-single-family residential buffering up against existing single-family AG1 properties. And so the buffer is in place to provide that change in use between a proposed development and existing land use. In this particular case, you don't have that. You have a single plan of development, which includes both the AG1 piece and the MIX piece. So you've got one developer building the entire project under one common plan. The other issue that we have is this particular requirement, is a buffer necessary for commercial and non-single-family residential uses as they abut AG1 or residentially-used property? In this case, because of the site plan that's being approved by it, let me go back to that real quick. You've got single-family abutting single-family. And even though the mixed zoning would allow for other types of uses on that piece of property, the site plan that this is being conditioned to shows single-family adjacent to single-family. The only place that we have commercial abutting this side would be in the very front portion of the property, and that is buffered by the stormwater facility in the public park on that particular piece. So there's no single-family residential adjacent to, the only commercial on the MIX on this particular piece. And then the gray that you see here is open space, and while not specifically identified as buffer, and it is on the AG1 site, it does provide the same intent as the requirement for the buffer. So given all that information, staff is recommending approval of the current variance to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback. So in conclusion, the staff is recommending approval of the concurrent variance, as well as the deletion of 6C and the approval of the site plan as was submitted. And that would be consistent with the recommended conditions that are included in your package. I won't go through each individual condition, I'll save you that. But if you have any specific questions on those conditions that staff included, should you choose to approve this, we'd be happy to answer those. That's all I had.
Joe, specific question?
So, so Carter, I'm a little bit confused. What's the difference between the proposal that's being looked at today versus what we looked at back in April or March or whenever it was, May?
Essentially the same. There are a few modifications from the green space. You've got a little bit more green space. You've got...
Is the overall density the same? In other words, the homeowner count would be the same, the number of homes is the same? Is that correct?
It is 25 single-family homes versus 24 single-family homes in the original submittal. You've got less density as far as commercial office space is concerned. You've got a little bit more green space, but it is essentially the same plan that we've reviewed previously.
Okay, so I guess the point of my question is, because I saw it as being the same, what has changed? Why has the, because the city staff recommended denial originally? What is the thing that changed that changed the staff's mind?
Well, I think we wanted to look at the project as a whole. And so we wanted to bring forth not only the specific code requirements associated with this project, but planning recommendations associated with this project, too. And so while the code tries to identify the vast majority of situations where a certain requirement may be necessary, so in this case, the buffer standards, it can't envision all site plans that may come forward. And so when we look at not only the requirements where that buffer is required, so specifically in the code adjacent to non-commercial and non-single-family and commercial properties, that doesn't exist in this particular site plan, except for the very front of the property. And so we truly felt that there were conditions associated with this particular piece that needed to be taken into consideration as we looked at the variance particular to the 75-foot buffer, that we didn't necessarily take into consideration the last time. And we wanted to bring forward to you a full picture that represented not only the legal requirements of the code, but good planning practices as we saw them, too, so that you would have all the information necessary to make an informed decision.
Right. Well, I'm all in favor for us making sure that whatever we approve, it's always in the best interest of the city in terms of being the best product that could be offered for people who move to the city to buy.
Right.
So I'm not interested in us approving plans that are second-rate so that people buy second-rate product in the city. But what was the, what was the change of mind? I mean, these conditions all existed before. You guys had the same opportunity to look at them before. I'm trying to understand what process, did we follow new process? Did we change our process in terms of how we review? Did we scrutinize the details a little bit differently? What was it that caused the change in decision? I mean, I get the fact that you guys are looking at it and you consider this differently now, but why? Why are you considering it differently?
Well, I don't know if I have anything different than what I just explained, but it really came down to the overall review of the property itself, and how it fit into the intent of the Birmingham Crossroads overlay, the ability from a planning perspective to provide probably a better product as a single-family residential than as a townhome development, the ability to provide some open space and green space associated with the parks, the true intent of the buffer being to try and separate a commercial use from a residential use that we don't have in this.
Right, and I see that as being a little bit interesting, that we would require a buffer inside a property that's all got the same owner and it's part of the same development. I was going to save that question for a little bit later, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Carter. Were you in charge of this particular process last time?
I was not the community development director at that time.
Okay, so that would be a difference.
Partly, yes.
Okay, all right. Not that, again, I don't know, I'm not trying to point out that we did something wrong then and we're doing, trying to right it now, or that we did it right then, we're trying to wrong it now. That's not my point. I just see that there has been what appears to be a pretty material change, in our opinion, without a material change in the evidence.
Right. Well, and I think in the last presentation, Kathy tried to enumerate that in her discussion at the end. While it wasn't necessarily as part of the staff point, staff report, she did try to have that discussion at the end regarding good planning practices versus trying to hear strictly what the code says.
The only other question I have at this point is, if all the drawings don't show this buffer space, is there any possibility people walked away from the meeting, whatever meeting it was, whether it was 2004, 2014, or last time, and thought for some reason, looking at that, that a buffer space wasn't required?
I think you could go all the way back to 2004 and look at the plans that were approved through Fulton County and come to that same conclusion.
I would agree, because most of the time, we focus on what the drawing looks like. And I know we say it's just supposed to be representative and all the zoning requirements need to fit the drawing, but it seemed like maybe there was some confusion. And I'm not trying to make up something, but it does seem a little bit difficult to understand.
Obviously, I can't go back and recreate what Fulton County may have thought at the time. They did hear a concurrent variance regarding the buffer and deleted it on the east side of the property. But the site plan that was approved and the site plans that have been approved through 2014 never indicated the buffer, and there was never any consideration of the buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I know we've got, probably we've got some public comments here, don't we, Sudi?
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make a statement. I know I've had input from folks, and this is for the audience's perspective, you know, why are we listening, why are we looking at this again? And I'll be the first to say, I voted no to support this variance last time. But in the meantime, I've also gotten a lot of feedback from citizens that did not want townhomes and more density and more development there. So again, that's why I'm open to reading at this, I'm assuming the rest of the council is, too. So moving forward, I know we've gotten some feedback and emails and whatnot from citizens, but they kind of connect themselves. They say, please, please deny this variance or this request, but because we don't want to see any townhomes, or we don't want to see more density. So it's kind of conflicting. So this is, you know, a good, good way to vet that out. So, but at this point, if there's no specific questions, I'll take public comment, and then council will have plenty of time to weigh in on the questions. Okay, Sudi?
All right, our first speaker is Mr. Tad Braswell.
And then for... Mr., if you wouldn't mind, just name and address for the record.
Tad Braswell, Oakall Companies, 5256 Peachtree Road, Atlanta, Georgia 30341. And just for clarification, we've presented this two different ways. So do we have the full 10 minutes? Do I, or do I get, because last time, it was like we got two minutes and then everybody got two minutes.
Can I move?
Well, I have been under the impression we're treating this as a public hearing. Is this just public comment or a public hearing? If it's public hearing, it gets 10 minutes.
Public hearing.
Yeah, 10 minutes.
And then, again, depending on the number of comments, we'll accommodate everybody.
Okay, well, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to come back in front of you. And I would say that the biggest thing that changed that came out of the last meeting in the ruling was really that the zoning conditions prevailed over the site plan. And so that was sort of what caused us to come back through. But y'all did a great job of presenting the site plans. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them. This was the first one. This is the one that we had approved by the preliminary plat that was approved. The big things about this plan that I want you to take note about is that there is an additional driveway on Birmingham Highway with this plan. It goes back to a traditional detention pond along Birmingham Highway and traditional sort of screening. And while we do meet the open space requirement, there's not a lot of usable open space in this plan. Those are some of the highlights to me of the two different plans. So this is the plan you have before you today. Again, if you look at it, there is a lot of usable open space. It's more all-in-one space. It's, so it's a better plan because it's got better usable open space. But the main reason that we sort of decided to come back through is, in the two hearings that we had, the last two hearings that we've come up, we had very little comment at the beginning, and there was a lot of people behind us, and everybody said they wanted less density and more open space, which was sort of what we were trying to provide. We came to the community meeting for the preliminary plat to be approved. Everybody came up and said they want less density and more open space. And so we felt it was worth one more shot to come back and try to give the community the less density and more open space that I think everybody's looking for. But the open space is usable, and we get, we only have the one driveway on Birmingham Highway, I think is notable. So I'll go through some pictures. This is some three-dimensional aerial views of what it will look like. It's got the pond out there on the road. And I think you should take note of the distance between the retail and the first AG1 home, and that the open space in that park area, while it's not a 75-foot undisturbed buffer, it does create that buffer between the MIX property and the AG1 property. So it sort of lives up to the, to me, to the spirit of what that ordinance requires. And here's just some more views of that when you get down. The tree protection replacement plan on this project is pretty severe. We're planning, I think it's a $200,000 budget for tree replacement. But it's, I mean, if you can, if you look at it, we're planting trees just about everywhere we can. But again, it's, if you look at the, you know, the distance really between the MIX and the AG and the park there, and the buffer that it creates. This is a view of the park. I think as you drive by, this is a much better look for the community as they drive by, what they'll see as they go and see a quality development. So this is just some more views of the, and this, again, this is part of the park area. This is very usable open space for people to come and run the dog and hang out. This is very usable open space for people to come and run the dog and hang out. So this, this is the, you know, one of the comments made a couple of times before was that we didn't quite do our due diligence when we bought this property. We did get a letter from the staff that said that our current site plan met all zoning requirements. That's what we had to have to close by. Staff at the time, their defense, they had done the reviews that they thought they were, but we really, you know, thought we had done our due diligence to the site plan that we were proposing. But what I want to spend some time on now is really what we probably didn't spend enough time on last time, and that's the variance criteria for getting a variance. The first one is that does our, in granting this variance was not in the intent and spirit of the ordinance, I believe that the way that we've positioned the parks, and it does meet the spirit of the ordinance, and I think that the site plan that we're asking to be approved meets the spirit of the previous zonings that have done and what's been presented to the community several times, and which has got a lot of community support in certain times that it's been approved. The second one is, is there any detrimental, special circumstances on this property? I think that we've talked about that it's being developed all as one piece of property, excuse me, having the buffer in the middle of it would be, makes it difficult. The other thing is that the two driveways, this gets rid of one of the driveways, the shape of it, I think that's a better situation. If you look at the buffer, where the buffer was supposed to be, the 75-foot buffer, right now it consists mostly of private, there's a couple of good trees in it, but there's also a large ditch in it, it's an old farm ditch from, I don't know how long ago, but it's probably six feet wide, six feet deep, and it's sort of a dangerous situation. The trees along the road, when we do the road widening, will be cleared, so it's, it would be a strange, you know, buffer in the middle of a neighborhood. The third criteria is, is this going to be detrimental to the community? I think that the better development is not detrimental, it would be a benefit to the community. And the fourth criteria is health, safety, welfare. I think that the health and safety, less cars, I mean, less driveways, I think that's a better situation. Less density is something that the community's asking for in welfare. The single-family homes will sell for more than what the townhomes would sell for, and I think it's a better fit for the community. This is, there was a lot of time spent on the 2014 zoning on the architecture of the homes. There was not, there was no, there was, there's not any examples of townhomes in there, so I just wanted to go back through. This is some of what was proposed and what was agreed to. Many peoples of the community supported this plan back then, but this is the architecture that was proposed as part of the conditions, and we will, we plan on building a similar product. So I just want to sort of go through these. It's that good farmhouse look that we plan on continuing with. And this is a product that's really not available up in this part of the county. I'm not saying that you need to redevelop every site, put sewer in for, you know, a lot of this, but some product like this up in the area is required for diversification of home product. So I will end it there. I think there's a few people that might be speaking, so, and then I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this point, Sudi, do we have any, anyone else in favor of this application?
We have five citizens that are here this evening that would like to speak, and then two citizens that are present that would like me to read their comments into the record. As far as opposition, we have six that are present this evening that would like to speak, and two that have presented me an affidavit earlier that are unable to be at the meeting and out of the jurisdiction that I will read into the record.
Okay, and then, so we'll allow those in support to speak first, if that correct Ken.
It is, Mr. Mayor, but when we get time, and you may want to go ahead and do this now, we've been trying to go ahead and make motions to grant equal amounts of time for each side. You may want to do that now, just to let everybody come up and speak.
Is council okay with that? We have two minutes left. You say you have about five, so maybe another 10, 10 minutes for a total of 20 minutes on each side. Council good with that?
Can we go, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, we just go ahead and do a motion?
Could I have a motion to allow 10 more additional minutes on each side?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kurt Nolte.
Good evening, my name is Kurt Nolte, I live at 825 Dockbridge Way. Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you tonight. Yeah, I look at all development in Milton through the lens of at least preserving, if not improving, our quality of life up here. This sums up pretty easily as more and better green space, less density, and of course, less traffic. We started looking at this proposal versus the existing or what's been approved that he could build, so that's what I think we really need to compare it to versus the last addition that was shot down. As far as green space, under the existing approved plan, it included a 75-foot buffer of mostly scrub trees along Birmingham Road. The new plan includes the same amount of square footage of green space in the form of a manicured park-like setting, including a walking trail and pedestrian bridge. This change also allows for interpartial connectivity, reducing one of the curb cuts coming onto Birmingham Highway. The existing plan, the existing approved plan includes a retention slash weed pond. The new plan includes a lake with a water feature. We talk about less density. The existing approved plan includes, I've heard 30, I've heard 33, townhomes for a total of 41 to 44 residences. The new plan includes no townhomes and instead 25 single-family homes for a total of 36 residences. The existing approved plan includes commercial along Birmingham Road. The new plan includes no commercial along Birmingham Road. Less traffic. Assuming a family of four will make four to six car trips. I'm sure they've got some metric for that, I don't know what it is on how many trips there are per home. But if we assume four to six car trips a day between school, work, and other activities, so by reducing the total residences by eight homes, we're actually reducing the overall number of car trips on those roads, which we know are congested, by over 100 trips every single workday. Now, I remember when the council voted on relocating Matilda's to the same intersection, and a major concern of the opposition was additional cars that would be on these exact same roads on Fridays and Saturday evenings, six times a month. Now with the existing plan for this partial, we're talking about over 100 car trips daily, mostly at peak times as people are heading out to work, school, activities, and such. Bottom line, the new plan includes the same amount but better manicured green space. It eliminates commercial on Birmingham Road. It reduces traffic by more than 100 car trips every single workday, and perhaps more importantly, it reduces density by including either eight or 11 fewer residences. We simply as a city cannot say no to everything, and instead we should encourage better options like this one, when it comes to better green space, less density, and fewer cars on our roads. Thank you.
Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Judy Byrds.
Judy Byrds, I have lived at 1165 Bream Drive for 11 years. It's approximately one mile from the proposed development. I support staff's recommendation and modifications with an additional suggestion. At a minimum, the construction of the southernmost commercial building and its concrete parking lot should be deferred until after a solution is in place for the Birmingham Crossroads traffic congestion. Until that time, which I understand may still be some time, the developer should be required to enhance this area to continue the park launches to the south. Having lived in the area for a while, we are still trying to fill some of the commercial property around there so that additional need is not imminent. My friends and I lament that there are no nearby options for downsizing while being able to live near our current community. Townhomes are not attractive to me. A standalone home on a small lot would be more attractive and less likely to attract transient renters. With the deferral of the commercial building, as I've iterated, I would request council approve this request.
Okay. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Martin Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I've worked-
Excuse me, just procedure, naming that.
Martin Littleton, Freemanville, 13215 Freemanville Road, Milton, Georgia. As most of you know, I've worked with just about everybody in the city, and I found our staff to be absolutely impeccable. I actually support this plan. It offers a single-family housing. It offers the ability for some of us to be able to downsize, as the folks have already said, and most importantly, public opinion, sometimes we don't know always what's good for us and what's not. I mean, there's always two sides to every story. There's always a plus, there's always a negative. In this one, we could have townhouses, we're going to have single-family, and I support that wholeheartedly, and I support our staff, and I support our council, and I would appreciate the fact that you guys have paid attention to it. Thank you.
Okay, Sudi, if you'd call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese, 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia In tonight's proposal, it's, the pros greatly outweigh the negatives. So we have a reduction in density. We lose the townhomes and replace them with single-family residences. As a lifetime resident of that area, I just do not think that we are ready for townhomes in the Milton Crossroads. So, the reduction in density, the green space, the single-family residences versus the townhomes, it's really not hard for me to decide between what has allowed or what the applicant is allowed with the prior approvals versus this proposal. To me, this site plan greatly outweighs the other site plan. So, when you compare the two, there's not a lot of thought, I would think, that needs to go into that. The, I mean, the buffers were created to protect adjoining property owners, not protect interior division lines. Anyone that buys in this project will know what is proposed if you approve based upon the site plan. Keeping that in mind, I think you should go with staff recommendation and approve the better of the two situations. This is not a, this is going to stay the way it is now, or this proposal, it's going to be the other proposal or this proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Sudi, if you'd please, do we have any more speakers?
Next speaker is Mr. Curtis Mills.
Good evening, my name is Curtis Mills. I live at 16355 Birmingham Highway, business location 15800 Birmingham Highway, which is the southwest corner directly across from this corner in question, and I'm the property owner of the northwest corner, the old Bice store and the property around there. I also serve on the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee, and I'm here to speak in support of this variance request. I have, or was, a member and an officer of the Birmingham Hopewell Alliance for the last 17 or 18 years, and have been actively involved in planning and what development has occurred at the crossroads since that time. My house is just about a mile, not quite a mile, north on Birmingham Highway, so I'm committed to this area, been watching it closely. In 2014, when the modification hearing was heard, I spoke in favor. There was no 75-foot buffer in that plan. I didn't think it was necessary, and it was fitting with the theme of a pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-oriented four-corner solution. I always saw it as a hamlet. We wanted walkability within the corners and across the corners, and it never occurred to me, and I think many others before, that a buffer would be overlaid. If this variance request is defeated, and I saw a version of a plan that was approved with the variance, with the detention pond, with yet another curb cut on Birmingham Highway trisecting that corner, I think it's, I think it will look terrible, it will be completely opposed to the intent of the Birmingham Crossroads overlay, the district zoning, and take away a potential asset. In looking at staff's analysis and recommendations, I basically agree with all of the zoning variance conditions being met that they, that they talked about. The variance does not offend the spirit or intent of the Birmingham Crossroads overlay zoning. It's pedestrian-oriented, which I think is a big plus. In addition, there's a public usable, essentially a park, but that green space and little pond, I think that's going to be an asset for a community beyond just looking good while you drive by. And I think the 75-foot buffer clearly breaking that with a second curb cut would oppose that directly. Relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to surrounding properties and the public good. As a surrounding property owner, I think it's quite the opposite. I think all of us benefit from a better southeast corner solution. And lastly, public health and safety are secured. I mean, that's fairly obvious. So I see an opportunity to create a real asset for Milton and the Birmingham area, and I urge you to take it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mills, let me just clarify one thing. You mentioned, and stop the clock, you have to stop the clock, stop. You served on several committees, and you mentioned the Milton Green Space Committee, and I just want to clarify, you were just speaking personally, not for any committee or any-
Correct. Yeah, I'm not speaking. As a matter of fact, we're meeting in the building right now, and I scooted over here. I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee.
I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear you weren't speaking on behalf of any-
Yep.
-council or anybody.
Thank you.
Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next.
So I have two public comment cards to read into the record.
I think we'll do those if it's all right, and we'll do those after the votes that are here speaking.
That is, that is all I have in support that are here to speak.
Okay.
So we have a minute.
We'll move over to the-
Minute 36.
Anybody opposed?
So, in opposition, our first speaker is Cleveland Slater.
Cleveland Slater, 13670 Bethany Road, Milton. First, this is not a choice between two site plans. This discussion should be about a buffer, not a choice between two site plans. In fact, the developer tonight, in his words, convinced me that he really does not want to build townhouse, does not want to build townhomes. He indicated that the detached homes will sell for more money than the townhomes. Not a real big surprise there. If he can get 25 townhomes, or 25 single-family homes on the site, it's not much of a probably, maybe even more money than the 30 townhomes. I don't think that, we, the last time this issue came up, we talked about the townhome plan as a threat. Today, I still think the townhome plan is a threat. The conversation should be about a buffer and why a buffer is important. The buffer provides a visual separation between what will be a high-density development and a low-density development. Do not confuse our meaning of single-family homes with what will be constructed here. These are homes on 10, with 10-foot distances between the homes and with 10-foot front yards. That is not a typical Milton single-family home. Fulton County gifted us with the buffer protection. It will be for this council to decide if it's important enough to maintain what- It will be for this council to decide if it's important enough to maintain what Fulton County gifted us with and visually screen the high-density development from—the view from Birmingham Crossroads. It simply is baffling that we think this is a choice between two plans. There is an infinite number of opportunities to do something attractive and something that protects the buffer and maintains the original intent. A request that you deny at the variance. Thank you.
Okay. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Becker.
Counsel, why are we here tonight? That is the question that citizens are asking. I've received emails from a few dozen citizens, and that is a predominant question. And it's a fair question, because the two proposals are nearly identical. In fact, I think this one's a little worse than the last one. And you might recall that at the last hearing, there were 15 citizens that showed up in opposition, and nobody that showed up to speak for this. So, you know, the statement that was made earlier, that citizens wrote afterwards and protested this, I don't believe that. This is unfair to citizens to make them go through this a second time. And I called a few of those citizens, and they said, "Tim, I'm done. I'm done with the city." You know? This is ridiculous that we have to come march down here a second time. And that's bad. Citizens are disillusioned, and they're disengaging, and that is not good for our government. It's just like Milton's version of that movie, Groundhog Day. And there is a backstory. It's not the backstory that was told to us earlier about citizens complaining, but we know what the backstory is in this room. The backstory is that this developer was told that council regretted its decision the last time, and that if he came forward again, the votes would be there. It would be a lock for him. And that's disturbing to me. It's really disturbing to me. And the people are in this room that told the developer that. So, those of you that flip your votes tonight, you need to explain to citizens why you are flipping. There is one thing that changed, and that is that staff reverse its decision or recommendation of denial. And staff basically said, "You know what? There's other factors, like our training, our expertise, our professional judgment." And those trump the four-part test for variances. Staff doesn't have the authority to just make it up as they go along. We have a four-part test for variances. And if we're going to change that, if we're going to bring a lot of other factors into it, then we need to enact an ordinance. That's the proper and legal and right way to do this. And the city attorney did, in fact, on April 23rd—and you're going to see a video of this in a few minutes—he did say to council, "If you want flexibility, you need to change the variance criteria. That's what you need to do, not just make it up as you go along." I'm a rule-of-law guy, okay? And we need to honor the rule of law in this city. The other thing that the city attorney said is—he said, "You can't use this variance, this very strict variance test that we have, to make developments better," and that's a quote, "to make developments better. You cannot use our current variance ordinance." So, again, let's be honest. This illegal change to our variance law is just a transparent attempt to provide cover for city council members tonight that want to vote for this. We know that. That's the backstory here, and there's always a backstory in Milton. It's really unfortunate, because it means there's a lack of transparency. So, we say that we want better outcomes. I know there's council members, "We're going to give you a better outcome." Well, why do we have laws, then? Right? Let's get rid of our zoning laws. Let's get rid of our variance ordinance. Let's get rid of the comp plan. Let's eliminate the DRB, the BZA, the Planning Commission. Let's just have everything come before council. It can be a cage match up there. The other thing that I would say about outcomes is everyone has different opinions. I'm okay with townhomes and a buffer. I would prefer the commercial building on Birmingham Road, but that's my opinion. Everybody in this room has a different opinion about it. That's the great thing about democracy in America, you know? But I would remind you, the last time the letters and speakers were overwhelmingly for "by right" development, people were fine with "by right" development. And the last thing I would point out, and I'm going to end here, is this developer has owned this land for three years. He says he's losing $1,000 a day for every day he doesn't develop it. Now, I've been in business a long time. I'm a strategy consultant. I've done that for 25 years. I look long-term. I think about and weigh risk. I guarantee you, the reason he hasn't built those townhomes is his investors or the bank that he's trying to get money from, they know that townhomes don't fit their risk-reward profile. So, I just think it's more bluffing intimidation. He's been here three times now, seeking the same thing. And I'll tell you something else. He was the one that got the variances for Woodview over in Woodstock, and then he sold it to Pulte. So, I don't believe anything that's being said today from this developer. Thank you. Please deny this.
Okay. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Joe Whitley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's a real pleasure to be before you, and I want to thank you for your service. My name is Joe Whitley, and I live at 1250 Birmingham Road, and I have a point six miles away from this property. And also, I have a property located on the southwest corner, Building 300, in the same —right across the street from where the new Matildas will be starting at some point in time. I wanted to come before the council humbly and ask the council to consider some of the questions that Joe Longorio asked of the of the staff, which I don't know that we heard answers that—for my benefit, were answers that were clear answers. I leave it to the council to use your own intellect, your own minds, to assess whether or not there's any real change in what you've heard tonight from what you heard earlier. I trust that you will do that when you consider what your vote might be in this situation. I, too, join the comments of others, which is, how many opportunities does a developer get to appear before this council? And apparently, it's an unlimited number of opportunities. Certainly, I appreciate much of what the developer has said to you about moving from townhomes to single-family dwellings. I think that is a good suggestion. However, the process in this particular situation is flawed, and I only suggest that that's something we need to examine as a council and as a city before we go forward and approve any further properties for rezonings or variances in this city. So, the better course tonight would be deferral of this particular decision to another time until that can be clarified for the citizens of this community. I understand and appreciate developers. I've worked with them over the years in the numerous jobs I've been in, and appreciate that there are differences of opinion from developers. And our mayor is a developer and construction person, so you appreciate there's a difference sometimes between what you might think and what people in your communities think when things are being built. In this situation, to reference comments from an earlier speaker, it takes a lot of energy for me to be here at these meetings. I don't live in this community in the daytime. I commute to Buckhead. So, I believe every council member lives in this community and works in this community. The challenge for me and the many other people who were here previously is to come back before this council repeatedly and express our opinions about this particular rezoning and variance request. I think there are good reasons for the 75-foot buffer along the Birmingham Road. I believe having this back away from the visual aspect of things would be a good thing for the residents in particular in this new development. Whenever it's approved or disapproved by the council, at some point in time, something will be built on this corner. It's up to you, really, as the city council, to evaluate the plans that have been presented to you and come up with something that's good for our community. Simply put, we need to hold the line as an executive and legislative body and keep the 75-foot buffer along the Birmingham Highway, and also the 10-foot buffer that's in the interior. I don't know exactly, because we don't have the diagram on the screen any longer, what this retaining pond's going to look like. Those of you who have seen retaining ponds, it's not exactly what I would call real green space. It could be a hazard of sorts for individuals actually living near a pond that's going to get runoff water from the development. I like the notion—I'll be honest about it—the notion of homes as opposed to townhomes, personally, and I think that's an improvement that this developer has made in this particular I have submitted a letter to the council, which outlines some of my concerns, and I appreciate the council taking a look at it. I just don't know how many bites of the apple we can give developers in this community. Is it three? You know, is it two? Is it five? Is it six? Where do we draw the line? And I don't know that we've done that adequately here tonight through any examination of how this particular rezoning and variances before this particular council and mayor. I trust that you do believe, like I do, that the integrity of this process is paramount. I don't doubt any of you believe that is important, and I am concerned with how this has been approached. I'm concerned about our community going forward in other situations where rezonings are being considered. So, I ask the council to defer, postpone the decision on this until there can be an adequate look at what occurred in terms of Mr. Longorio's question. I don't think you ever got an answer. So, I would request tonight denial or deferral of this particular rezoning request. Thank you.
If you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Bill Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Bailey. I live at 255 Hickory Flat Road, about a mile from this intersection. And I'm not sure exactly why we're here tonight, talking about a new picture, and it's not part of the zoning modification or the concurrent variances. We denied it in April, or you denied it in April, and I think that our city attorney, Ken Gerard, said it very well, and I think it would behoove us all to listen to his words again. If you could play the tape for me, please, on what we need to approve variances. I guess it's going to take him a moment to get it running.
And the other question to Ken, this is for you as well, with some of the questions on the legalities of even the conversation that we're having here, kind of what Joe was asking. But if there was a passage of this at all, would there be some law that would be violated by us, by this, based on interpretation?
A law that has been violated? You know, that's a fairly strong way to say it, and I know that's what you mean, right? You're trying to—you know, so I get that. Let me just say this. Milton has always had very strong variance criteria, always has. We've debated it before. When we go into training with the Board of Zoning Appeals, we've talked about it. If you read the variance criteria, it's in the connective, meaning that it's—every element has to be satisfied. You know, the terms within the variance criteria are obviously subject to some interpretation, although I will tell you that Paragraph 2 is—you don't see words like "extraordinary" and "exceptional" in a lot of codes. That is—that's strong language. And so, one thing that the council might want to think about—and again, I'm just trying to provide you the best guidance I could—is it breaking the law to grant a variance in this situation? No, it's not breaking the law. But from the standpoint of public policy expectations, you may want to give that some consideration. And, you know, once you hear that someone can do a plan on a piece of property, but maybe not optimally, it begins to lend itself in favor of perhaps it's not an extraordinary hardship. Okay? So, again, I'm trying to answer your question as best I can. Milton may want to think about changing your variance criteria, perhaps, if you want additional flexibility on issues like this. Because the way this language is drafted now, it is very strong. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Well, you just raised another question. So, are you anticipating or implying that we do not have that flexibility in this situation?
I'm suggesting that the council can grant a variance if it chooses to, but I am suggesting that once you begin to go down the point that you're simply going to grant variances to make developments better, then really what you're doing is something different than the variance language as it is identified right now. Does that make sense, what I'm saying to you?
Mm-hmm.
Did I answer your question? Did that go around? I can—I can try again.
I got it. I got it.
Please deny this variance and modifications.
I'm trying to be as forthcoming as I can be and trying to—I hope you understand without a sledgehammer to the forehead, so.
Okay. Laura? Laura? Okay. Okay, do we—next speaker?
Next speaker is Sharon Mays.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this opportunity. My name is Sharon Mays, and I live at 15160 High Grove Road in Milton, Georgia. And I ask the same question that's already been asked, is why the heck are we here again? And how many times do we have to come here again and again for people to leave their homes? This is your job, and though you might not be paid as much as you should be, it takes an enormous amount of your time, but it also takes an enormous amount of our time. And at what point can we, as citizens, really have faith in our city council and our mayor to say, "We fought the hard battle. We proved that it did not warrant approval. So, why are we just months away, and here we are again?" The idea that we need to maybe look at our variances and our rules, I do also feel that that may be the case, but I certainly don't want to see a watering down of our variance procedures. They were—they were developed after a lot of toil, a lot of time and consideration. So, it is a delicate balance between those, in that right now, to make decisions and approve things that really do not meet the criteria of our current variances, to do that is definitely causes concern, causes distrust, and also, it opens up the way for others that say, "Well, I think mine is extraordinary as well. This current proposal does not meet the requirements of the variance request, and I ask that it be denied again and again and again." And I can see that the number of people that are able to get down here will get fewer and fewer, and it just causes us all to be weary and to wonder, at what point can we trust our representatives? Other than that, especially that they're just—I don't believe it meets the overall requirements, and just changing it a little bit does not change the original—that it would never met their criteria. Thank you.
Sudi, do we have any more questions?
Our last speaker is Julie Zoner Bailey.
Julie is unable to attend tonight, so—my name is Bill Bailey, and I have been asked to read the statements of Julie Zoner Bailey into the record this evening, as Julie cannot be here. Good evening. My name is Julie Zoner Bailey. I reside at 255 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia. I am asking that you deny this rezoning, specifically the modification of concurrent variances for the southeast quadrant of Birmingham Crossroads at Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road. The developer is returning with a plan for the southeast corner that is nearly the same as the plan denied in the spring. This modification includes variances— This modification includes variances that are not supported with required hardships, specifically the applicant wants to delete the required 75-foot buffer and 10-foot setback, improvement setback, excuse me, to accommodate more commercial development to the tune of an incremental 7,000 square feet along Birmingham Highway than would otherwise be possible, and two, to allow him to build high-density homes in the buffer area he is seeking to eliminate. Despite staff's original recommendation of denial, the staff has changed the criteria by which they judge variances to now recommend approval. It is critical to note that this recommended approval is in direct conflict with the direction the city attorney gave the city council and staff on April 23rd of this year. The city attorney was quite clear that the zoning laws of the city of Milton require the four legal standards to approve a variance to be met. This zoning modification request, none of those legally required variances standards are met. The city attorney is equally clear that the zoning modification process with variances that do not meet the four standards cannot and should not be used simply to make a development better, which of course is subjective and is in the eye of the beholder. These variances should not be approved. The original statement of staff in April clearly state this zoning modification does not meet any of the legally required standards for variances. Nothing has changed. This request still does not meet any of the four legally required standards for variance approval. As such, please deny this. If the legal process by which variances are evaluated is to be changed, it must be changed in an open and transparent process that is adequately and appropriately publicized to allow citizens the right to weigh in and comment on such changes. Legislative changes that completely change the way in which the variances are evaluated and improved cannot be done in the dark without transparent public participation process. To do anything less is a violation of your oath of office and the value statements of the laws of the city of Milton. The variance requested by this applicant are in direct conflict with the Birmingham master plan, the Milton overlay, and the original zoning and zoning modifications that have already been sought. These concurrent variances would allow more commercial density and visibility than would be accomplished otherwise. No public good has been demonstrated. These variances should be denied. There is no hardship. I'm not going to make it through the rest of this letter. I'm out of time. Please deny.
Thank you. Is she, do we have any more public comment?
That's all the speakers that we have.
Okay, then I believe Ken can confirm, Steve, or process will allow the clerk to read in the name and address and position of those which I believe are also on the public record, correct? You send them to everybody, and they're all emailed? Okay.
I am in possession of an affidavit regarding the inability of this individual to attend the city, so I'm going to read this into the record. It's David Damianni at 3344 Peachtree Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia. I am writing to express my opposition to the zoning modification request for the southeast corner of the Birmingham crossroads. As you are well aware, this issue was prosecuted earlier this year and denied. I, like many others in our community, am very busy and growing weary of having to defend the city's legal position over and over again. I trusted Mayor Lockwood and City Council to listen to your constituents as it pertained to the music venue for the crossroads. You ignored your constituents and Milton residents that evening. Perhaps the legal grounds upon which this request are based will keep you from disappointing us yet again. Do the right thing and maintain your original vote to deny said request. Next card in opposition, and I am also in possession of an affidavit regarding the inability of this individual to attend the city council meeting, because they are out of the jurisdiction, is from Jennifer Pino, 175 Oakhurst Leaf Drive, Milton, Georgia. First of all, thank you for your service to our fine city. In advance of tonight's meeting, I want to request that you deny the zoning modification in regards to the southeast quadrant of the Birmingham crossroads. I am very concerned that the staff has now recommended approval for virtually the same variances which were unanimously denied earlier this year. It has come to my attention that the staff has changed the criteria by which the judge variances, which is very concerning. The future of our city and whether or not Milton stays true to its purpose and character are on the line. Developers will undoubtedly use this new standard to justify variance requests which will directly affect citizens neighboring larger parcels, such as the Hopewell Road-Sue Dynasty property, which is the subject of a drastic rezoning application for the third time. The unintended consequences of approval for such variances will be excessive, and Milton citizens will no longer have the quality of life which they currently enjoy. If Milton wants to change the direction of development to the city, then the public needs to be given the chance to weigh in, and the CLUP, along with other governing documents, should be changed to reflect the new direction. The city should not be in the habit of granting variances at every turn, rather the CLUP and governing documents should reflect the values and direction. It is my belief that this is exactly where we are now. Only two years ago, in 2016, the CLUP was extensively reviewed, updated, and adopted by city council, representing a vast amount of effort and involvement from the community and an expensive consulting firm hired by the city. It is time to hold the line and to adhere to the plan that has been adopted and overturn this most recent change made by staff to the criteria, which happens to be in direct conflict of the advice of the city attorney given to council and staff at the April 23rd, 2018 zoning hearing, wherein the previous almost identical zoning modification was unanimously denied. Please abide by the plan which was created by citizens and staff and adopted by city council, and deny the variance and reverse the change to the criteria. Thank you and kindest regards. And then I have two public comment cards to read for individuals that are here present at the meeting. The first in support is from Martin Locke at 14140 Freemanville Road, Milton. Please support applicant's proposed development as submitted. And the next and last public comment card, the individual is present, Larry Johnstone, residing at 16095 Henderson Road, states, I feel the adjustment is excellent. The new design better fits the blight that is now Birmingham crossroads. Now it is an eyesore, and the new proposal far outweighs the previous designs, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. And at that point, then I'll close the public hearing, or I guess actually technically the applicant would have, correct, Ken? The applicant would have rebuttal time?
Minute thirty, whatever is left in time.
Good evening again. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. I think that part of our problem last time was we did not go over the criteria for the variance. We spent more time talking about the difference in the development, trying to make the development better, and did not spend our time going over the individual requirements for the variance. Heard a lot of people talk about the requirements, but I didn't hear anybody argue the merits of our argument of why we believe we meet those requirements. And then the other thing is, we won't be back in front of you. I can promise you that. We're, you know, we've, we're going to develop, the preliminary plan is there, so I'm not going to be dragging everybody back up here again, if, you know, not threatening anybody or saying, you know, we bought the property, we own it, we have to get through, you know, we'll do it, do it. It'll still be a quality development, and we're not going to build any junk, but I believe, and I've never been in place where they argue for not better development, but it would be a better development if you agree with me that we meet the criteria to grant the variance. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing now. You know, and I'll look out for any questions. I want to make a statement real quick for Joe, you know, again, as it was mentioned earlier, I've been on council here longer than anybody here, at least concurrently, probably close to 13 years now, and overwhelmingly, in fact, I can't think of any times I've got something different. Our citizens want less density, more quality developments, the little bit of commercial areas we have, they want quality, but they, the biggest thing is their concerns are traffic and low density. So I would be doing disfavor to our citizens if I didn't seriously consider a proposal or approving a variance that actually had less density and less traffic, so. And that being said, I also want to briefly mention the process. I, as well as I'm sure the council, I know our staff and our citizens, prize and put a lot of emphasis on process, and that is very, very important. For the council's sake, I know we've heard that the mayor has said outcome is more important than process. Well, obviously, if you take that and put that in context, that was based on a statement about the average citizen, and when I mean average citizen, that loves living in Milton, is very educated, but one of the 99% of the folks that have never stepped foot into the city council chambers or city hall and know nothing of the processes that we all go through and that we adhere to, they prefer the outcome. They want to drive by and see less density and safer roads and quality developments on the commercial. So again, it's not that I put the process, the outcome, in front of the process. That was a statement about citizens that are not engaged. They trust us as elected officials to make the right decisions, that hopefully there is less density and that we stick to the vision of Milton, so. That being said, Joe, I'll let you.
So, Carter, and again, I'm not picking on you, but I think you mentioned at some point in time that there are no, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, the very specific issue of having a buffer inside of a single development. Are there any examples of that anywhere in Milton?
Where we have an existing buffer internal to a single?
Right.
I can't think of one. I can't think of one off the top of my head.
Okay, is, would we, is it part of our ordinances? How did this get in there? Did we negotiate it in? Is it there because it's a very clearly written part of our ordinances that it must be there? How on earth did this issue get there?
How did the buffer requirement get into our ordinances?
No, on this proposal.
Oh, well, if you take a literal interpretation of it, the way the code reads is that between commercial and non-single-family residential uses, it requires the buffer. So in this case, you have a MIX versus an AG1, even though, so you have two different zonings within one common plan of development.
So it's partly because it's a mixed-use piece of property that we create this condition?
Yes.
Because there's plenty of places where we've got residential, residential, residential in a single development.
Right.
But there's not very many examples, I'm trying to think of one, where we've got commercial and residential as part of a single development, correct?
As part, but as part of the rural overlay?
Not as rural, but there's other examples.
So those examples would exist?
There's other examples, Crab Apple Station, just across the street as well.
Okay.
It was developed under traditional zoning.
All right, so I know, I'm not trying to stifle discussion, I don't want to stifle anybody's questioning of the facts or anything like that, but to me, there isn't anything that's changed about this. We've already discussed this. We've had citizens that came here now on two different occasions, actually three, if we go all the way back to 2014, to argue their points of view, both in support and against this, and I don't see that we need to go another two or three hours talking about this one subject. So I want to propose that, or make a motion that we deny Agenda Item Number 18293 now. The likelihood that that's going to pass, I don't think is very high, but I feel compelled to do it nonetheless.
Okay, well, at this point, we've got a motion on the table for denial from Councilmember Longoria. We'll open up for a second, and then there'll still be discussion after that before it's voted on, so. I'll have a second. Okay.
I have some questions for Ted, if that's okay.
Questions, too.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Brazel, on the recommended conditions, I know staff, it says the minimum square footage is 2,200. What size homes do you plan on building there?
They'll be probably 24 to 32.
Okay, just because, you know, the pictures of those homes were much larger than 2,200.
Some of the stuff that this was designed by Lou Oliver is a little bit smaller, but that's, 2,200 is a good, you know, but we could go to 2,400 if that would make you feel.
Okay, that was one question, and then I know the trail, is that brown sketch going from the AG1, is that an internal trail for?
There's, so there's two terms, there's two things about the trail and the development. So you have one that's sort of internal that goes through the stream buffers, and then there's the trail that was part of, that's an easement around the development, it's up to 50 feet, it was 20 feet at one time. It's, that was part of a larger trail system that I think was going to be, that was considered back in 2004. The, if you, along that property line, I mean, you got to go up a two-to-one slope, I mean, that's really probably never going to be developed, but it was a condition that we're going to leave in there that in some way in the future, it was going to be built. 50 feet was very wide for what would be an eight-foot-wide trail. Typically, that easement is going to be closer to 15 or 20 feet.
Okay. Rick?
Sharon, I've got a few questions. I guess to Rob, and you had mentioned, across the street, we have kind of a mixed use. We have both the single-family homes and we have commercial without having a buffer, but that's part of MIX. My question, I guess on that, that example is on the south side, is there a buffer between that and the single-family that are lower density? For this, right across, because we gave the example where we do have internal, we don't have a buffer between commercial and single-family, but that's MIX across the street, correct?
Right.
That's not, that's not low-density housing, that's all on public sewer, correct?
That was developed under the original MIX.
Okay.
Currently, it's a transect zone, but you're correct. What I do believe is that with that MIX adjacent to what is technically actually Alpharetta on the whatever, south side.
South side, correct.
That they did have to ask for variance to the same similar requirement of a buffer between MIX and the single-family to Alpharetta, so.
Okay, but know what, within Milton, do we have any other examples where we have, what's proposed is really MIX directly connecting to AG1 without a buffer? That's what I think the developer is proposing with this, what he brought forward to us today. Do we have anything like that within Milton today?
So as Carter pointed out, that in 2004, the board of commissioners approved the variance along the east property line to go from the buffer to a 10-foot landscape strip, so.
Okay, so we, I guess, the answer is today, we don't really have anything like what's being proposed within Milton with residential and commercial budding and high density. Okay. I guess going back to Ken, what you, we saw the video, any of the things that you said and gave us guidance on, has any of that changed? Does that still, has your opinion changed from what you told us the first time?
My opinion changed with respect to the variance criteria in the law? No. My variance, my position with respect to the variance criteria with respect to the city of Milton is what it was. I can't, and nor will I run away from that. You know, if you look at the variance criteria, 641883, the considerations, there are four of them. You know, to me, 1, 3, and 4 of those criteria are fairly, those are sort of very much in the, in the eyes of the various council members, and even 2 has some subjectivity to it, and I'll just read it, if you don't mind, just while we're kicking this around. There are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of this zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, or topography, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions not caused by the variance applicant. So sort of, it's sort of, and within that paragraph, it's sort of a tale of two criteria. There is what I call sort of the property-specific criteria, the unusual topography, the, perhaps there's some geographic elements within the parcel that make it almost unbuildable. To me, when I read paragraph 2, that first portion, it's getting into the area of there is something going on on a piece of property that due to geographical configurations or topography or whatever, buffer streams, that if you try to apply our codes to it, it basically can't be built, or it's a very, it's a challenge to be built, and so therefore, from my perspective, the reason that variance allowing... And so therefore, from my perspective, the reason that variance allowance exists at all is to hedge against an administrative take. Basically, we render a piece of property with no economic value because we can't adjust our numbers. The second situation is a little different because it's separated by an or, and it says other extraordinary and exceptional situations. I stand behind what I said the first time. Whenever I see language like extraordinary or exceptional, that is a, that's a fairly significant showing, not caused by the variance applicant. That phrase, however, is not really linked to the property. That was the fir, the first portion was more of the physical characteristics. This second section, there's, there's subjectivity in that, but I, I stand behind what I said whenever it was, April or whenever, because what I'm concerned about is, is we are granting variances just to make something better. If, if that's not what the council's doing, if there are other criteria that you think in your head or that, that our staff indicate do in fat give rise to this exceptional or extraordinary situations, that, that's fine, but I think we need to find that. We need, we need to, we need to make a determination of that and not just, we want to make it better, it's something we like better. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And so I, you know, I can't, it's the beauty of video, right? I mean, you can't run away from what you said, nor, nor would I. It's what I, it's what I believe to be the case. But I will also say that, that I'm not the decision maker. I think if you take my words from April or March, what I said, I think I said twice, you could approve this and it's not illegal. I think I was asked that, that specific question twice. But, but I do want us to link it to our code. I, I think we need to, to be true to our code, and that's, that's why I'm sort of taking a little more time on this tonight. I very much believe that, and you should expect nothing less from me than that.
Okay, and, and that's really my, my question is understanding, because we've heard people come up in public comment, talk about process, talk about people coming back multiple times, et cetera. So I'm just trying to understand. I know if we didn't have a variance process, if there wasn't even the allowance for that, why even have council? We could just have staff follow a group of laws, right? Here's the code, it's very simple, here, you just apply it, we don't have to have anybody in there.
Well, yeah, I mean...
I'm using that, I'm using that as an extreme example.
Yeah, but we're in two different, we're in two different genres right now, because right now, we're talking about basically zoning mod, which is what I think of this as. And then it's got a, what a concurrent variance, is it not? So, so I tend to think that the variance decision is in the context of your legislative hat, and then the, the variance is more in your quasi-judicial hat. So there are two different standards, two different things that are going on here, and we're trying to mesh them together this evening.
Okay. Another question, I don't know if this is staff or maybe it's more legal. Is a site plan, we've been talking a lot about a site plan, and we've been talking about what I, I still consider high-density housing, whether it's single-family detached or single-family attached, which would be townhomes. We're, we're acting as if they're different classifications. They're both, there's a little bit of difference in the total density, but I, I view them both as high-density when we compare to the, when we talk about AG1 or low-density. Question is, is a site plan binding? We're having a site plan presented to us, which talks about 24 single-family homes. We're doing a zoning modification where we talk about the amount of commercial, and we talk about the amount of designated green space, but when I look at the site plan, the difference between single-family detached and single-family attached, is that binding when someone presents and said, we're going to build 25 of these, but can I, can I hold someone accountable to that from a zoning standpoint?
I, i- is, is the product only, only designated on the site plan? Is that, is that the only place you're seeing that depiction?
I guess I'm asking for, because I, I, we dealt with this with Fulton County in the past, and now we're dealing, now we're the city of Milton for a reason. I live over in an area that has more high-density housing, and I'm not against any type of housing. I'm okay with, with anything, but when we're talking about approval of a plan or a variance, my question is, when I look at the type of housing, AG1's clear, you know, those are not, those are going to be single-family detached. The question is, with this, if we were to prove this as stated, is this binding the 24, or could they still in fact build townhomes? Can you change that?
I may be able to help, Ken. This was the subject of the, of, of our problem last time. We have since switched, changed our language, specifically Condition 2A, which now will mirror the site plan word for word, so we don't end up in a situation like we did this time. And that is something that we changed as a practice as a result of the last go-around with this.
Okay, well then, kind of going past, the next stand, question is, the current zoning as it stands, if this were to be denied, does that prohibit the developer from actually building single-family detached? It talks about townhomes, but does that prohibit him from building, if he still wanted to build X number but still have the buffer in there, does that allow him to build detached single-family? Or is he, because it says townhomes in there, does that mean he can only build townhomes? Or does he still have the option to actually build the plan as it state, stated today? Can he build a single-family detached?
I think the way the condition is worded, it's an and/or condition, townhomes and/or single-family.
Okay, so it doesn't prohibit him or the developer to actually, with the current zoning, to fit, to build single-family detached?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I guess just to, to comment on, on some of the, at least one of the comments that were made, there was mention of a backstory, and I, I know the folks up here on council, I've served on council a couple of different times. I'm not aware of any backstory. I think people up here really are trying to serve, that, serve the community. We're trying to come up with what's the best thing. We listen to both sides. We even hear today, there's people that are for it, people that are against it. We've seen that in the notes that came in, so I guess from my standpoint, I'm not aware of a backstory that's driving this, this decision. I know, I haven't been involved in that, and I'm not aware of anybody else who's trying to do something nefarious to get to, you know, to, to help a developer. I think what we're really trying to do here is come up with what's in the best interest, what's a good product for the long-term development of this area for Milton. And I guess I would also mirror what Councilman Longoria said, is essentially, I'm looking at this and I see basically the, a thing that's very similar to what we saw back in April when we, we'd gone through this discussion. And that's all my comments.
Just a quick question to go on y'alls. This council voted for this site plan, if I'm not mistaken, in 2014. Is that correct?
The city council did.
Yeah, I mean, the prior, prior council voted on this.
Correct.
When you say this site plan, the site plan we approved in 2014. Yes, we voted on it.
Because that, they didn't have the buffer either. And so what changed from 2014, I mean, so...
If, if, it's the language that imply, that says site plans are for, you know, guidance only, they still have to adhere to all the rules and regulations of development.
Correct, and I think Mr. Braswell bought this piece of property after council approved that site plan and had a letter from Robin McDonald saying, yes, you're good to go. And so I think this is an extraordinary circumstance that we have not seen in this city, at least the last six years that I've been in, so that's just kind of my two cents on, on that. I have other questions later.
Laura, I think you have.
Just a couple of process questions, going back to the six months. Is that specific to a zoning modification? Can the same, is it six months and the same thing can come back? Or is it six months and it has to be changed by a certain threshold?
And I want to jump in too, excuse me too, because I want to ask the same question to, not to put, wait for Steve and, I want to piggyback on that because we have had some concern, and, and I'll be the first to say, from some folks' comments, that, you know, citizens don't want to come back here. I'm sure the developer didn't want to come back here. I'm sure we don't want to hear this again. Again, if, Steve, if you or Ken could address the process of how this legally came back and, you know...
I can read that one too, specifically from the code, so this...
Is that, Laura, is that what you were thinking too?
This comes out of Section 64, 1946. If a variance or modification application is denied by an authorized department director, mayor, and city council, or the Board of Zoning Appeals, an application for the same variance or modification item shall not be considered until one, at least six months has elapsed from the date of the decision, or new information pertinent to the subject not previously considered is submitted by the petitioner and the 12-month period is waived by the hearing body.
Okay, so we fall within the six months, so the, the same application could come back? Is that the way I heard it?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So, and, and staff in that same application are allowed to change their opinion? Is that allowed?
It, it, well, yes, it, it is allowed, of course.
And, and just to verify that council, we have the authority to deny or, you know, accept variances?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman.
I have a few other questions of the developer, if it's, now's a good time. I have a question about the orientation of the homes that are, that replace the commercial building on Birmingham Road. Can you explain?
We had, we, at one time, we had had them facing Birmingham Road, but then you had one house that did not have frontage on the right-of-way, it fronts on the park, that new park we put in. So we turned them back. It would require another variance to not have frontage, and I didn't want to go through another variance, so we turned them. And then what we're going to do with that house is, is we'll do a wraparound front porch on there, so you have a front porch, it'll face the road, and it'll, and then the park area there will sort of mix in with the, the village green and the park that we're building that, that'll all sort of flow all, you know, across the whole frontage, so it'll look like one park all the way across the front.
Okay, and, and your plan is, in that open space, to do plantings?
Yes, much like what we, and I can show you back, what we were doing in the village green, it'll be a, a very park-like setting.
Okay. The single-family schematics that you showed, is it your, is it your plan to build those yourselves or yourself?
Yes, we will build those ourselves. So these, the, the homes I showed tonight are part of the zoning conditions that were already approved. So that was the, those are the homes that are, that are part of the 2014 zoning conditions. My sort of point on that was that there was really no, there wasn't a lot of talk about townhomes at that time, it's because there was no architecture of townhomes that was approved. There was a lot of time spent on the architecture of the homes, this, what Lou Oliver designed here, and we're talking to Lou about maybe designing some of what we're doing, but this concept of the farmhouse look is what we're going to build. It's all alley-fed, it's all rear, rear-loaded, so it's this concept. So, and then on, I developed Crab Apple Station across the street. The only place we ever worked on the buffer was between us and the subdivision next to us. There were no internal buffers. Dean Cowart developed the one next to us on the other side of the lake. So we had a, a buffer, and I can't remember what it was, but it wasn't an undisturbed buffer, and it was also the power lines would go down that property line. And so, but when we negotiated that development, that zoning, we spent more time talking about architecture than we did, that buffer was not so much. But the reason that you have this sort of weird, rarely do you have a mixed-use development that's not all zoned, the same thing. Having this AG1 piece internally is where you end up with this weird buffer. From my conversations with Mary Ann and with Alice Wakefield that were at Fulton County at the time, that interior buffer would have been waived at the interior of a development, so that was the reason that it was not, wasn't, wasn't needed back then.
I have another question. Condition 1E with regard to the, the conservation easement, nothing in this language has changed yours?
We're fine with that, yes.
Okay, and, and that's the maintenance of the village green, everything?
It'll all be maintained by the homeowners association, but it'll be deeded to, I think they wanted a, a third-party person to deede it to, like a conservationist or something. Was that what the request was?
Yeah, it's...
But it's all deeded perpetuity to the homeowners association, or an easement that's put on it that will be in favor of, there's plenty of green space conservancies that, that would, that easement would be in favor of. But the only way it would ever be developed would be that somebody would come back in front of you and say, we want to fill the pond in and put houses on it or something. And I just don't see that ever happening.
With regard, Ms. Burge, to the, the commercial uses, you mentioned in a prior hearing that you had lease...
There's still the pediatrician that came before, he's still on board, and it's a pediatrician, and then there's a pediatric dentist that are going to take up the 10,000-square-foot building. The other 7,000-square-foot building, we're talking with another doctor. It'll most likely be, and there's got to be some retail use to it. You know, the problem is getting a restaurant or anything like that is you got the, the sewer capacity limitations. But be, you know, anyway, that's, but that's, it'll probably be more office use, it'd be a, it could be an accountant, attorney, or, but that's what we, that's what we're thinking.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Matt?
Yeah, I'll talk for a little bit, the, you know, it's been a very fascinating process, you know, with this and everybody in the room and all sides. And what I have to say is probably more cultural than anything else. And Steve, sorry, you heard this one before, you know, but you, I think we all do a lot of studying, a lot of reading, and look at different ways for inspiration. It was interesting. And Tad, you can sit down as well, and go ahead, you don't have to stand there, but as I think about this, I think the, it was funny, I was watching an episode of the Andy Griffith Show a while back, and, you know, if you ever watched Andy Griffith, you know, the, the values that they have back then are very interesting, and they talk about just human conditions of what we, what we undertake and what we go through, especially with regards to government. And if you know the story, you've got Andy's the, the sheriff and his son is Opie, and there was an episode once where, where Opie was following the law so strictly, but it caused all kinds of problems. It was very interesting, and, and what Andy was very good, the sheriff without a gun, right? He was able to understand the why behind what you do. And they're not always as cut as dry as it seems, and he, once they asked Opie, you know, what happens, Opie, if you came to a lake and you saw a no fishing sign? And would you go swimming in the, or no swimming sign, would you go swimming in the lake? And, and Opie said, well, no, it'd be against the rules. And Andy said, that's right. And he said, well, what if you came to that lake with a no swimming sign, but you saw another little boy out there in the water and he was drowning? What do you do? You know, and, and Opie said, well, I'd probably go out there and save the boy, but it was against the rules, right? And, you know, obviously, the question here, what everybody up here is trying to do, is we're trying to figure out what the right thing to do is. I think we all are in this community. What, what is that right thing? And obviously, being the, one of the stars of that video today that we were watching, I can tell you, I, I voted against this the first time around, really only because I had more questions based on the dialogue. I like the idea that we don't have townhomes in the new plan. I was never in favor of townhomes there, and there's an opportunity to create a better product on that, and that is one thing, I'd be open to hearing that, but more importantly, we got to make sure that the systems are in place, the, the process is in place, and the understanding is in place. And what's interesting about this one is fascinating, we have a lot of questions, and in my seven years here on the council, and Joe, maybe in your 13s, we haven't had this question, really. This is really trying to figure out what's, what's right, what's not, what, what is it? And, you know, as I've been up here, I, I realize there's always, you know, three aspects of every law. You know, there's a law as it's written in black and white, there's a spirit of the law as which is intended, and there's the interpretation of that law by anybody in power at any given time. And when they're all in line, it, things work pretty well, when they're not is when things get kind of interesting. And right here, what we have is a question of our variance codes, which are very important because I think the city attorney was right, Ken, that, you know, we do have a public expectation of that. The question then becomes, and what is, what is that? That we also have to make sure we have an accurate fairness of, of what we're dealing with. And when I was asking those questions last time, I had more questions, but I just didn't know how to formulate them in my head about what made the most sense. And, and I just, at the time the motion was made and, and not knowing enough information, I think we did the due diligence to, to vote no at that time, but according to our existing codes, the applicant had an actual right to come back before us, again, without anything different. That is in our codes, the process has been in place, staff accepted that according to the process, there's nothing been, nothing backroom deals on that. So now here we are, this is before us again, and the question goes a little bit to more research and more understanding on some of those questions that we had. And now that we're here, and we did look at Article 10 of Appeals, Section 64-1883, Item 2, you know, I, I agree with you, Peyton. I, I think that, that buffer situation on a single property is something that we hadn't seen before in this city, at least not in my seven years here, you know, as an applicant coming before us. And so I, I look at that as an interpretation, why do we have that? You know, when I was elected, I think that my viewpoint of zoning is that really the greatest asset we have in our community are the God-given townhomes. greatest asset we have in our community are the God-given talents he put inside every one of us, and as far as we figure this out together, we can be great. And I like to see us trying to direct development rather than let it happen to us. I don't agree with some people that want to deny for the sake of denial, thinking that it'll just stop everything. I don't think that happens, I've seen we've had things come to us. And we've also had zonings where, you know, things have been, you know, downzoned, and fairness to developers hasn't been right. On the other hand, we've also had developments come in where those who've moved in next to a property haven't, have, have, have an expectation of what their neighbors are gonna be, and we're trying to find out what good neighbors are right now. So, as I see this, and I look at this, and look at everything involved, and what we talked about from procedure to staff to comments to everything, you know, from a procedural perspective and from a, from the zoning aspect, I do think we have an extraordinary situation where an applicant had a belief under 2004 zoning originally, and then 2014, that a buffer wasn't required from a development perspective. In my mind, that is an interpretation that is subject to us as a legislative member of this body. I'm one of seven, not everybody else may agree with that, that's fine, or one of six right now. But I think that that's, that is from a consideration perspective, I see that as, as a circumstance that would allow me to clearly say, according to the accordance of the law, that we have a responsibility to, to make a vote on an issue that is not illegal, first and foremost. So, I'm sorry for the long talking here, I just want to make sure we get all the points out. As, as we look at that then, we make the decision, then the question goes, does the development fit into the spirit of what it is we're at, that our citizens are asking us to do from an election perspective? And, um, you know, we have heard, and I've heard, I go to that Publix all the time, you know, people don't want higher density, and we know that the current plan that is currently in play is a higher density, and though the developer's come before us with something that can reduce that density. And from my perspective, from an obligation, not only from a campaign perspective, what I promised when I ran all those years ago, but it was trying to make sure that we did the right thing to keep density to a minimum, and use whatever means necessary, below the ground, whatever, in order to make sure those things happen. So, part of it too is subjective, part of it is a question of whether townhomes are right for that corner or not. I personally don't think they are. And that is a right that, you know, anybody that runs for office can, can have those opinions, and that's okay. And so, there's a lot of factors here. What is the, the proper process? What is it we're trying to do? What is the legislative capacity that we all have? And so, anyway, um, it's been a fascinating process, I think it really has, and I think everybody here has been trying to work hard to figure this out, because it's asked questions we've never asked before. But, um, from that perspective, I, I think that we, um, I, I think that we should pass this, uh, but be very clear, though, on the interpretation of, of that part of the code, that there might be a circumstance here that is extraordinary from a condition that, um, that has us come before us that we need to seriously consider.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Joe, and then I got a couple of quick questions.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, our, our challenge right now isn't our townhomes the right thing to have on this corner, our challenge isn't, um, you know, how many homes, our challenge isn't how big is the lot, our cha, none of, none of, all those things are really, really good questions, but none of them are really what our challenge is. Our challenge is that we have some language in our current ordinances that don't provide us with the proper guidance in this particular condition. And so, what we really need to do is we need to go back and update our ordinance and say, "In the case of mixed-use development, buffers aren't required between two pieces of the property," all right? That's really what we need to do, because if that was clear, I don't think we'd be having this discussion. I think the idea that the buffer was a requirement wouldn't have ever come up, and so therefore, probably this property would be developed already. But, but we can't do that, because our current ordinances say it this way and don't give us any guidance that says, "Well, you know, in the case of a mixed-use piece of property, this requirement really doesn't apply." And so, I wish we could get that squared away. The other thing I was gonna ask you, Carter, when you read the, uh, conditions under which a zoning request can come back up, you used two different time periods.
I did.
In Point A, you said six months, in Point B, you said 12 months.
I did.
Or actually, I think you called it a year.
12 months.
What does it say? Is it actually?
I read it exactly as it is in the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, at, at some point in time, we changed it, because I was under the impression it was 12, a 12-month waiting period, without any extra things happening. So, at some point, we changed it, but we didn't change it consistently in the language.
Well, I'll tell you the, the way that we interpreted that, that, um, if it was going to be heard by the same body, the six months would apply. If this were a decision that would be moved on to Board of Zoning Appeals, the 12-month period would apply.
Ah, okay.
Or the council would have to waive the 12-month period in which another body could hear the same request.
Okay, well, I was with, less worried about that than I was about the other thing, so, thank you.
Ken, I just want to ask, ask you, you know, and to go back, and, 'cause I know there's been some concern about legalities and, and the, and this, and the variance. Can we legally, the council, the mayor and council approve or deny a variance such as this that's before us?
Like I said, I think on the video, and certainly it's in the minutes, uh, yes, you can. You know, as you all are going through this this evening, I'm trying to take notes, and I've heard a couple of things come out, and, and Carter, check me on this, but the things I heard were things like, um, that, that it seemed to be on the council's mind, how about that, with respect to this? That this buffer has not been shown on the zoning plan for, for years, am I right on that?
That's correct.
That the developer received correspondence from the city suggesting that the site plan conformed to part unit regulations, is that, is that right?
Is that, is that a previous zoning?
I think that's been stated a couple of times, but I don't know, I don't have independent knowledge of it.
Yeah, correct.
That the buffer is not, is it in fact serving the purpose of a traditional buffer, is another element I thought I heard this evening. In other words, does it buffer anything?
Not external to the property, no, it's all internal to the property.
All right. And then I think Councilmember Jameson, I heard what, that there was a site plan approved in 2014 that did not show the buffer as well, did I think I heard that correctly?
That's correct.
So, it would appear that that, those are the elements where the council is, is trying to fit this in the criteria, so at least I understand the bookends.
Okay, and the other question, and I think, Carter, you've confirmed, but that the applicant has met the requirements to bring this before us.
Correct.
And, and I say that because we've had public comment, again, I, it certainly, you know, I don't think anybody up here is looking to revisit, you know, another zoning, I don't think the citizens were, as the applicant, it's not, it's not fun. But the fact that we are up here, I've, you know, I feel strongly that, and I, I, I respect everybody's opinion that spoke tonight or that we've heard from, and it's in my opinion that everybody probably sitting in this room would agree that lower density, uh, and more open space and public amenities would be in favor of it. I think the, the biggest crux here is, you know, as to whether we should approve a variance or not in the process of that. So, and again, maybe that's something we can work on with that process moving forward. Um, you know, that being said, if we do approve this variance, and I know some people will say, "Well, that sets a precedent," and the precedence, and, you know, another developer will want to. I'm, I'm of the mindset, based on what I hear and what I believe our citizens want, anytime a developer wants to come to us and ask for a variance to eliminate, you know, lower density and, and more public space, I would certainly be open to, to listen to it. So, again, um, you know, out of respect for everybody here, I think, overall, everybody's looking for the same thing, it's just a, it's a question of, you know, the process and, and, you know, should we allow variance or, or not? But again, that being said, in good conscience, I'm looking at this again, and, and inclined to support it, because it is lower density, less traffic, um, you know, and, and it'll certainly be public amenity, uh, you know, the looks from the road and the buffers and all that with the space, so, you know, with that move forward, I'll open it up for any other questions, comments, Lauren, then Peyton?
Um, I, um, my comments are, are as follows. Clearly, if you go back and you watch the tapes and you read the Birmingham Crossroads Master Plan, we have two, two ordinances that are fighting with each other. The, the Northwest Fulton Overlay says we need a buffer, and the Birmingham Crossroads Master Plan says no need. And I personally put a lot of credence into the Birmingham Crossroads Master Plan. That work began back in 2001, some of you all are in this room tonight. That's 17 years that this master plan for that four corners has evolved, and there's been a lot of sweat equity put into that plan. In 2014, the same plan was approved by council with two well-respected community advocates that I respect and look to for guidance, approved this enthusiastically. So, support came without the buffer, because it's a good plan. It reduces density, it fosters a village-like atmosphere, which is exactly what the Birmingham Crossroads Master Plan was supposed to be. It consisted of a community park, and the community park, in this case, in my opinion, acts as the buffer, because the open space transitions from one use, which is residential, to another residential use. The communities are connected, walkability was always a goal of the Birmingham Crossroads Master Plan, and the size and the scale of the buildings were to be single-family. The 2014 hearing lasted almost three hours, because they were detailing the porches. There was no discussion of townhomes in the detailing of that with Lou Oliver. So, for those reasons, I can easily go through and justify, um, the criteria for the variance. You know, the intent of the undisturbed buffer, which is found in the northeast Fulton Overlay, is there. It, it, it's, there's open space for that transition of uses. Item number two, there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations. I fully agree with staff's analysis. Mandating the undisturbed buffer, you know, it, that's, that offends the central premise of the Birmingham Crossroads Overlay, for this community that everyone participated in creating. And relief is granted, I believe that the community will suffer a hardship if we don't approve this variance. It reduces density, it secures si, single-family homes, which, you know, I haven't heard anyone say that they would prefer a few here tonight. There's more contiguous open space. We've increased our housing square footage with a, with a park in perpetuity that that HOA is going to, um, maintain. We have one less curb cut on Birmingham Highway, which is a D, G dot road, which is very busy. And once again, it, this is creating a more friendly neighborhood node, and I do think that it secures the public safety and health and welfare of our community.
Okay.
I got two, two questions, and I got a 30-minute statement for everybody.
I'm gonna reiterate, Laura mentioned three hours.
Uh, this is Mr. Baswell, can you come up real quick? So, I'm having a, a little bit of trouble with that minimum square footage, because I lived in Crab Apple Cross, Crossroads or Crossing, I forgot, and I looked up how big my square footage house was, and it was 3,400 square feet, and you showed me pictures of some homes, so, they're gonna be two stories, I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna...
Some of what we're trying to, 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 a lot of the target market of what we're doing here is empty nesters, it's a, it's a, it's like a ranch product, um, master on the main, I mean, really, that's the product that's lacking up in, in this part of the, the city is a place for people to, to move down to. There's, it's not a lot of square footage that's needed in those, so, 2,200 to 2,400 or a few, you know?
Is it two-story?
Yes, all of it, it's a story and a half. It's usually, if the master's on the main floor, and then you'll bump up the second floor and do two bedrooms and some storage, or a bedroom and, and an office and some storage. But everything is, is, is two stories, a story and a half.
Are you gonna build it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've sat here before, and we haven't gotten that answer, or we've gotten that answer and that wasn't the case, I was just, want, want you to look me in the eye and tell me that?
Yes.
Okay. Question for Robin. Now, this is kind of off-topic, and I don't want to get laughed at, but on some of these commercial uses, you know, we're kind of evolving a little bit, and I see we're missing one thing that I'm wondering if we would, could put in, and that's vape shops. I'm being serious. Vape shops, tobacco, you know, those kids doing vape, they're all over Highway 9, and, you know, if we're gonna eliminate all this other stuff, why can't we put that in there?
Oh, well...
Eliminate, eliminate, oh, come on.
I was just saying, that's something more...
No, no, but I mean, we have, we have, and I don't know if we even have that in our code.
We haven't.
Well, can we add that?
That, that was 14 years ago.
All right, all right, I'm gonna reel this back in.
I know you wanted to go, right?
Hold on one second.
All right.
I mean, is that something, a condition that could be added in this, if council wanted to do that?
I want to sit through three hours just to add elimination of vape shop, so...
Okay.
Um, but no, I just want to make sure, those are kind of my questions, and I've sat on the planning commission for five years, comp, comp plan, council, this is the first time I've ever seen a developer come in and ask for less density. Um, you know, I've seen threat plans, and every threat plan usually is a threat plan, because they don't have the underlying zoning. This, they have the underlying zoning, and this is our last opportunity to take that 30-plus townhomes away, make it right, and move forward.
All right, 100% agree.
I've seen it every time. So, you know, citizens shouldn't have to come, come here more than once. I made a mistake the, the first time, so hopefully y'all won't be coming back a third time, and, um, I'm gonna vote to support this, and hopefully we can have a work session in the future on our processes and variance and stuff, I think that'll be good.
Okay, uh, if nobody else, I will open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a recommendation?
Ken.
As part of that then, because I candidly can't remember the last time these criteria were scrutinized, at least at the council level, as they have been scrutinized, um, and, and, and I may be forgetting some, but I can't recall it. So, as part of the, um, the motion, and I don't know, again, I truly, whichever way it goes, but I might ask that, that we do make some, some findings on these criteria. Again, not long findings and nothing long, but I mean, I, I think we need to at least, with respect to granting the variances, that we either find that the four criteria have been satisfied, or find that there has been an exceptional situation. I mean, that's, that's why we have labored over this. I feel like that the council is fully apprised of these criteria now, so I think, you know, staff and legal's job has been done, you all have, y'all have debated this. And even if it's simply a finding that the four criteria have been satisfied, based upon the record presented tonight, would be of, of use, but I do think we need to make a record of that.
Let me do this, 'cause at this point, we don't have a motion.
That is correct.
If we have a motion basically for approval, then, you know, we can weigh in.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's fair.
So, Ken, I'm trying to understand what you just added in there.
Yep.
Do you want us to include as part of the language of the motion, the fact that we either believe or disbelieve that the four criteria have been covered, or?
Yes.
Or the four criteria have been met?
That's what you would be finding if you approve it, so, that's right.
So, that, that means we can have, like...
Can I have what?
Different versions of the same motion, where, for example, I may believe that the criteria have been met, but I still want to vote against it. So, I would say, "We've met the criteria, but I want to vote for denial." It, or I could say, "We haven't met the criteria, that's why I want to deny it."
I think that demonstrates the wisdom of the mayor's suggestion, is that we need to see what motion is made, and then operate.
Okay.
So, perhaps I was premature in my advice, I was just trying to get ahead and let you know that, given how much horsepower we have spent on this issue, I think it would behoove us to at least identify on the record that we have found these criteria have been met, if that is in fact where the council is going.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll, I'll open for a motion, and then can help fill in the blanks, depending on that motion.
Can I just ask this question, going back to, are we going to modify the, these uses?
Well, that would be in the motion.
So, that would be in the motion.
In the square foot, in the square footage.
Which, where is it?
It's in Condition 1A, so you can, um, so there's been some, uh, on page 14, on 1A, there's been some changes to the densities, but, uh, um, let's say you can just throw it in after roadside produce stands, comma.
We'll figure out where it is.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll just throw it in the, the motion.
It'd just be a modification of the motion.
So, he makes a motion, and they have a specific thing they want to put in there, then staff could help.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I thought Councilmember Jameson and Councilmember Bentley both did what I was suggesting they may want to... Bentley both did what I was suggesting they may wanna do. You've already sort of done this in your informal comments, so just letting you know that's what I was thinking in my head, depending upon where y'all wanna go on this.
So, I'll open up for motions.
Let me take a stab at it, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong. All right, I'll make a motion to approve ZM 18-02 slash VC 18-08 with the following recommended changes. Under 1F, minimum square floor area of 2,400 square feet per dwelling unit, and then under 1A, to, under whichever is less but excluding billboards, add vape shop, tobacco shop in there as well. And that's my motion.
Okay, and then Ken, do you wanna weigh in on that? And that's up to you, Councilmember Jamison, if you...
Well, I mean, are, Councilmember Jamison, are you approving the variances, or you are?
Correct.
All right, so with respect to the four criteria, I mean, I do think we need to speak to them just for purposes of perfecting the record. That way they'll be distilled into the minutes. You know, would it just be, as, as far as you're concerned, that you believe, based upon the record this evening, that the four criteria have been met?
Absolutely.
Satisfied?
Yep.
Right. I think at that point then, just a generic expression we'll, we'll have to do.
Okay, you wanna...
Yeah, I did.
Hold on, Carter.
I just wanna clarify that, that's recommended approval with staff's conditions.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's a recommended approval with staff's conditions, with the previous conditions that I just put forward, plus that it does meet the four-part variance test.
Thank you.
Okay. I have that motion from Councilmember Jamison. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Jamison for approval, as read into the record with a second from Councilmember Kears. Any discussion? Rick?
Just a question, Ken. Can we, I know we've run into this before. Can you condition minimum square footage on residential? Is that binding? Can you actually say, I know we've got it in here, is that enforceable by, by law?
I think it is enforceable. Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I think you've got, that was four to two. Was that a nade from you two, Rick? All right. We will move on to new business. Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
This item is consideration of a project agreement between the City of Milton and the State of Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the construction of restrooms at Providence Park, Agenda Item Number 18-308, Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross.
May I end, council? This is to request approval of the project agreement for the construction of restrooms at Providence Park. The agreement is with the State of Georgia Natural, Department of Natural Resources, and provides the city with a land and water conservation grant in the amount of $100,000. And the grant requires a 50% match. The total project cost is $200,000, and it is planned in the FY 2019 CIP budget. The pre-application for this grant was done last year, October, and you guys approved that we turn in that grant. We've since got approval from the DNR that we got the grant, and here we are with the contract to accept that grant and proceed with putting these bathrooms in that Providence Park.
Okay. Let me first just ask, Sudi, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
We'll close the hearing, pardon. Laura, you have a question?
Just, no questions. Just wanted to thank you for the effort in putting in for these grants. I know the taxpayers really appreciate your efforts. I do too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I like doing it.
Yep, thank you. I know it takes a special talent to get them, and you get, you keep getting them, so thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Not all, open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18-308.
Second.
Okay, motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sudi Field Police, on the next bus, new business item.
Next item is consideration of the following subdivision plat. Kingsley Estates Phase 1 Unit 3A, Land Lots 266 and 311. Keyside Drive and Bodiam Court Final Plat, nine lots, 12.14 total acres, .74 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 18-309, Mr. Robin McDonald.
Good evening. We have one item for tonight. It's Kingsley Estates Phase 1 Unit 3A, Quayside Drive and Bodiam Court, for nine lots, for a total of 12.14 acres at 1.74 lots per acre. This is the location up off of Birmingham Highway, actually, I'm sorry, Freemanville Road, but it does connect all the way into Birmingham Highway, the subdivision. The roads are already in place, and the applicant is just, I don't know, requesting for this final plat to be approved by you all, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any. This will be the last phase of the development.
Okay. Questions on that? Anybody? Okay, do we have any public comment on this, Sudi?
We do not.
Okay, we'll close the hearing, and I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 18-309.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Koot, second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, Sudi Field Police, on the final, new business item.
Final item is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton authorizing change order number one to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Interdev LLC for the purchase of hardware.
I think Stacy, was Stacy gonna do that?
She's gonna do that. I, I can lend my way to her. So what this is, is we're looking to piggyback off of our Interdev contract to be able to purchase the hardware we need. We are on a, we're in a time crunch because we have to have this in place before the switchover, which is scheduled for, I believe, December 28th. Hence why we're, the emergency before you this evening. We believe it's going to take every bit of that time to get it purchased, delivered, and deployed.
Okay, and this does, I mean, I talked to Stacy about it earlier. Basically, we get better pricing than the state pricing if we go through, so I think...
It was gonna be, I believe, it's gonna be six, sir. One and a half dozen, but it was going to allow us to be able to move quicker than otherwise.
She'd actually said it was...
I can't let her come in and contradict me now, so.
She... I think Stacy, I just asked a quick, by doing this, it could save us some money also, correct? Better pricing.
Save money to Interdev?
Yes, we do. We save over $10,000 going to Interdev.
Okay.
Slap me.
All right, any questions on this? All in favor, or no? Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, what's the agenda item on this?
18-303?
Pardon me?
There isn't a, there isn't. There's not an agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I...
It was added.
I make a resolution that we approve consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton authorizing change order number one to professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Interdev LLC for the purchase of hardware.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Morik, a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, Sudi. All right, anybody have anything on council they wanna report on?
Milton Literary Festival this weekend, and Veterans Day breakfast as well, so I know that's, that's a big deal, but the literary festival's fun too, as part of that, and that's a great time to get a chance to go to that.
Yeah, and also, I was gonna say, you know, also thanks to the, the veterans' markers and the, the group, and also the volunteers putting those up, so that's great. All right, we'll move into Department Public Works.
Sarah's out tonight, so I'll, I'll take that. Couple of quick projects, I think I mentioned before, that the state is moving forward on intersection improvements at State Route 372 and Batesville Road, left-turn lanes there, and State Route 372 and Green Road. That is what we refer to as a Florida T, which is a little bit more higher, higher-volume intersection, and I think we'll handle that a little bit better. Also got notified, I don't know if you remember, but months ago, we had talked about being notified by GDOT of their assistance to replace the Hickory Flat Road Bridge. That one didn't make it through the process, but three others did. So now they're looking at helping us with the Hopewell Road Bridge right at the swamp, the old bridge there. The first bridge on Birmingham Road is coming from Hopewell, so, and then one on Freemanville Road, so. Those are obviously longer-term projects. Their process on that is about six years when, as they get through design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, so I'll look for that in the future. It will be good to have assistance on all of those. Next summer, we'll be working on the Western Bridge on Birmingham Road, which is the one that's got handrails for guardrails. So we'll be replacing that one, and the Middle Bridge is one of our T-SLOSS projects, so with GDOT's assistance, we'll have all the bridges on Birmingham Road replaced over the next five to six years. Another project coming up, we've got some trees going in on Heritage Walk in the median. That project will be going on this week. Mark's put together a plan for us to add some ginkgo trees down the median, so that'll be a nice addition as Baldwin and GDOT start wrapping up that project. And our crosswalks, so we have a two-phase project with crosswalks in Crab Apple area. The first phase is gonna be crosswalks across Heritage Walk at three locations, one at Atasca, one right here to line up on the corner of the building with the plaza across the street, and then one at, at La Coma. Future phases will include improvements and crosswalks across 372, but we'll be working with GDOT on, on those, and that's all I've got for tonight.
Can I add a comment, just, and I'm kinda late even bringing this up. We had discussed it a while back, but as we're talking out here at Birmingham and McFarland or the Roundabout and whatnot, the new road, the McFarland family that used to own all this property and all that, I had talked to Tim McFarland a while back, and he was very humble and said, well, not looking for anything, you know, to, whatever, to tap them or whatever, but it'd be kinda nice to, you know, have something with Crab Apple and in honor of the McFarland family and the history there, whatever, you know. I don't really have an answer as to what it is, but whether it's a name and something in the Roundabout, or some kind of plaque, or, or something, but just wanna kinda throw that at the council, if they'd have any interest in exploring, exploring that.
I talked to Tim about that too, a while back also, and I think that'd be a good idea for us to do. Obviously, they owned a lot of this land, so it's, it's part of our history, so we should consider that.
So, if, is the council okay exploring that? I mean, you know, just some ideas or something, and bring it back to, you know, don't wanna pop too much on you. All right.
Okay.
Hey, Mayor, Council. Just a few brief things. October is Fire Safety Month, and we participated in 18 events and reached out to over 1,900 students, as well as about 370 adults. So that was a successful month for us and a busy month. And we have a new hire that's starting on November 26th. This is going to fill one of the vacancies that we have, and this gentleman is a Valdosta firefighter, certified State of Georgia EMT, and he went to high school at St. Francis, so we're happy to have him. He's moving back up to this area after going to school down in the Valdosta area. Our second CERT team completed its training last month. We have eight new CERT members, which gives us a total of 18 CERT, certified CERT members, so we'll be bringing the graduation group before you next month. We're working with the North Fulton Chiefs on a new contract with AMR, our ambulance provider. We're trying to improve our response times, as well as additional units in the city, so I'll keep you informed as that progress moves forward. And we started conversations, or actually, I've reached out to Roswell Fire Department in regards to automatic aid in the Crab Apple area. Still waiting for a specific time to meet with them, but we, we have kinda started that ball rolling a little bit to improve some of our coverage out in this area. And the last thing is, our pancake breakfast is December 8th, from 8 to 10. Last year, we were snowed out, and so we're hoping for a, that's kinda sound weird, doesn't it? But we're hoping for a successful year this, this go-around, so. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Councilmember Bentley for her assistance with capturing or obtaining or wrestling down two wayward horses, but her, she was very helpful in, in helping us accomplish that, so thank you.
No, it goes right back to you. Danny Stevens, is that?
Danny Elliott.
Danny Elliott, sorry. Okay, so wish I could've had my, my video phone going, because the horse literally jumped over his head. Did not let go. So I was, it was a moment, and I said, dang, we're back here alone, but it was, it, I'm so proud of our firefighters and what y'all do for the community. It was, it was very well managed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. See you later.
Always last. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Get the words out, communicate.
I'm trying, I'm trying. It's late. The time chain is throwing me off. So we are continuing to maintain our open rates for our email communication, so we're ranging anywhere from 33% to 44% open rates. Most notable was our recent open rate of 75%, which was the community planning details associated with the park at the former Milton Country Club, so I was pretty excited to see that level of open rates. And our unsubscribes continue to be nominal, and we continue to see residents who are registering and who are pleased with the information that they're getting. We also continue to see growth among our social media platforms and increased engagement. Courtney's actually using our, our social media right now as part of our November Volunteer Appreciation Month. So if council member, members have any volunteers that you'd like to recognize, please email Courtney or myself, we're happy to make that happen. In terms of traditional media, we've held the cover of the Milton Herald since my last report in July seven times. We're seeing increased coverage with the Milton Neighbor, and we also am working with a reporter with AJC on a couple of feature stories that I think will be helpful to the community. Our website, I am pleased to report, we have a signed contract, and we've kicked off our planning process and implementation for a new website with our new CMS platform. We have a community survey that's now up and available through the 9th, and that survey will help inform the layout and the design of the website. And we plan to have the new website up no later than September 1. And then preparations, lastly, are underway for the 2018 Annual Report, which will ultimately inform our State of the City event, which we have scheduled or saved the date for Thursday, January 31st. It will mimic last year's format in terms of having that 30-minute period of meet and greet beforehand, and then having the mayor's remarks and address beginning at 7:00. With that, I will close and offer to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
You did say, new website, September 1st?
By September 1, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. That's the plan.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, staff, and those still in the audience. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. I have a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.